Well, good morning and welcome to City Hall. We'll get started with our invocation and the pledge of allegiance. David Stock is here from St. John's Episcopal Church. He'll lead us in the invocation. Afterwards, I'll ask Councilman Pat Ryan to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. But everyone, please stand.
Let us pray. Almighty and gracious God, you govern all things in heaven and on earth. Bless, we pray you, this council, bless our governor and our mayor and all the people who live in this city. Fill us with your life-giving spirit, with the wisdom and will to guide and guard your people. And as we leave this place, fill us with your heavenly benediction. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, it is telecommunicator week, and we have a group of people that are here with the police department. Do you all want to come forward? We have a proclamation that we'll ask the clerk to read as we get settled. Go ahead and start, Francis.
Whereas each day dedicated telecommunicators serve the citizens of Oklahoma City by answering their telephone calls for police, fire, and emergency medical services and by dispatching the appropriate assistance as quickly as possible. Whereas, the critical functions performed by professional telecommunicators also include those related to forestry and conservation operations, highway safety and maintenance activities, and many other operations performed by federal, state, and local governmental agencies. Whereas, professional telecommunicators work to improve the emergency response capabilities of these communication systems through their leadership and participation in training programs and other activities provided by Associated Public Safety Communications Officers, Inc. Whereas, Associated Public Safety Communications Officers, Inc., an organization engaged in the design, installation, and operation of emergency response communication systems, has set aside the second week in April to recognize telecommunicators and the crucial role they play in the protection of life and property. Now therefore, Mick Cornet, the mayor of the city of Oklahoma City, does hereby proclaim April 11th through 17th, 2010, as telecommunicator week in Oklahoma City.
Let's show our appreciation to these fine professionals who help us in public safety. And we have certainly learned through the years how important communications is in the entire aspect of public safety. And we have invested heavily in the technology that's so necessary for you all to do your jobs. The taxpayers out here, I know, want to thank you one more time as you sit down, but it's actually their tax dollars at work that are providing you all with the equipment necessary to make public safety a priority in Oklahoma City. So thank you for what you all do. Martha, you want to come up? We at City Council and at my end of the building are always sad to hear the passing of one of our former councilmen. And that's the case this week with the passing of Dan Fine and his widow Martha is here today. We have a resolution of condolence. I'll ask the clerk to read it.
Whereas, David Daniel Fine was born in Chicago, Illinois, on July 7, 1947, to Henry and Ray Ritchie Fine, and died December 27, 2009. Whereas, Dan graduated from Ben Guinness High School in 1965 and was a 1969 graduate of the University of Oklahoma. He was also a member of the Army National Guard. Whereas, after college, Dan joined his father in the family business and helped run Lieberman Produce until it closed in 1992. Whereas, Dan served on the City Council of the city of Oklahoma City from 1989 to 1993 as a council representative for Ward 4. Whereas, in 1993, Dan married Martha Hollifield. They settled in Yukon and opened Semeron Equine Station, their own horse boarding business. Whereas, at the time of his unexpected passing, Dan worked as a code enforcement officer for the city of Yukon, a job he first began in 1994. Whereas, Dan was preceded in death by his parents, Henry and Ray, in 1998. Whereas, Dan is survived by his wife of 16 years, Martha, daughter Lauren, and son Ian, stepchildren Renee Chadwell, Tracy Cox, Chris Oles, and wife Amanda, David Hollifield and wife Amber, eight grandchildren and four great-grandchildren, and a host of other relatives and many, many friends. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Oklahoma City that they do hereby extend their deepest sympathies to the family and friends of David Daniel Fine.
And Martha and I were visiting this morning, and she was telling me about the business that Dan and his family had operated for years and then how much he loved the city of Oklahoma City. And certainly, running for city council is an example of that. We will need a motion in a second to move this resolution forward. Cast your votes. Resolution passes unanimously. Let's show our appreciation to Martha and the family. Well, each month, the South Oklahoma City Kiwanis Club allows us and helps us to honor one employee of the month. And you can imagine, when you have over 4,000 employees, what a special honor it is to be selected as the employee of the month. And we have an employee of the month that I'll ask to come forward at this point. Rochelle Lewis, she's in the Development Services Department. Rochelle, come on down. I will say upfront that she works in code enforcement and is also a member of the National Guard and has worked in Iraq. And I asked her which was more difficult. Because the code enforcement people are really on the front lines of helping to make this city a better place, and it is not always pleasant. But having served in Iraq, I was only gestating. I understand the real danger of serving for the United States, and we appreciate your service in that area, too. We do have a resolution. I'll ask the clerk to read it.
Whereas, Rochelle Lewis has been a city employee for 19 years and is a municipal code inspector one in the code enforcement division of the Development Services Department. Whereas Rochelle investigates code violations in an area with over 8,000 properties, including the fairly high-profile area of the northeast 23rd Street overlay district. Whereas Rochelle uses a great deal of tact and diplomacy with not only citizens who may be in violation of a city ordinance, but also with citizens who are requesting her help in getting a situation resolved. Whereas Rochelle consistently maintains an excellent working relationship with fellow employees, contractors, and citizens. Whereas Rochelle sustains one of the highest rates in the division for the number of complaints worked, even though her workload has increased since code enforcement was combined with zoning. Whereas Rochelle also serves her country through the National Guard. With her last deployment being in 2008, she's been able to perform her duty to her country and still maintain all of her job duties for the city of Oklahoma City. Whereas Rochelle Lewis is committed to providing the highest level of quality customer service to the citizens of Oklahoma City. This council desires to recognize Rochelle Lewis for her dedication, professionalism, and commitment to the citizens of Oklahoma City. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and the council of the city of Oklahoma City that they do hereby thank and commend Rochelle Lewis, April 2010, South Oklahoma City Kiwanis Club Employee of the Month.
It's quite an honor. How about a motion? All right, cast your votes. This is where it gets kind of tense. Passes unanimously. Rochelle, thank you very much. It is Mid-America Christian University Day. I know we have a group of people here. They've got a good seat. They got here early. We have a proclamation. I'll ask the clerk to read it as we get settled.
Whereas, Mid-America Christian University, founded 57 years ago in Houston, has been a part of the Oklahoma City community since opening a 65-acre campus in southwest Oklahoma City in 1985. Whereas, 2010 marks a great time of growth and achievement for the school with the opening of the North Campus on the ground floor of the newest corporate building on the Broadway Extension, the Commons on Broadway, on April 1st. Whereas, degree programs available at the new location include an associate of arts degree, undergraduate degrees in behavioral science, Christian ministry, healthcare administration, management information systems, management, public administration, and criminal justice. Graduate degrees include an MBA, a Master of Arts in Leadership, a Master of Arts in Leadership, Public Administration, a Master of Arts in Leadership, Higher Education Administration, and a Masters of Science in Counseling. Whereas, the more than 11,000-square-foot campus was designed for the adult professional and features five classrooms, a computer lab, a student lounge, and a chapel. Whereas, Mid-America instructors teach all courses from Christian worldview and emphasize practical skills and ethical training. And they have provided Christian training to more than 70,000 pastors, church leaders, and businesspeople over the past five years. Whereas, the city of Oklahoma City is proud to welcome into our community the new North Campus of Mid-America Christian University and commend their commitment to providing quality education. Now therefore, Mick Cornet, the mayor of the city of Oklahoma City, does hereby proclaim April 8, 2010, as Mid-America Christian University Day in Oklahoma City.
Let's show our appreciation. I want to give you all the opportunity to talk more about the university. We have so many fine universities in the area producing so many wonderful students and creating a vibrant workforce for job creators and entrepreneurs to be successful. But use this as your opportunity to talk about your school.
Well, it's not hard when you drive around the city and see billboards advertising for adult education today. There are almost more students than there are universities for folks going back to school. And so with that being said, we are pleased to announce opening up a North Campus. We'll be able to serve over 300 students at the North Campus. We open -- grand opening is on Thursday. Class is beginning, I believe, in June. And so if you haven't heard of Mid-America Christian University, we're on the southwest side of town. And we're excited to be part of moving north and expanding our influence probably. What you need to know about Mid-America Christian University that is different is that everything that we do comes through the lens of a Christian worldview. And if there's ever a time that we need ethical, faith-based leaders, we believe that it's now. So thank you for allowing us to be here.
You bet. And the location is specifically the new camp?
Broadway Extension in between 122nd and Hefner on the east side of the road.
All right, and web address?
M A C U dot E D U.
M A C U dot E D U. All right. Let's show our appreciation one more time. Thanks, congratulations. Must say, you all are quiet this morning. I haven't heard a peep out of a single member of the council since we sat down. Okay. We'll keep your place warm. We're on item three of the council agenda, and we'll begin this morning with a presentation by Roy Williams, the president and CEO of the Greater Oklahoma City Chamber of Commerce. Roy comes by quarterly to update the council and the citizens of Oklahoma City on the wonderful things the chamber is accomplishing in the area. Roy, good morning.
Good morning, Mayor. Mayor, members of council, Mr. City Manager, thank you again for having me up here this quarter. I do want to share some thoughts and activity reports for you, kind of in two different categories. One being some recent news, recent things that have taken place and we've been involved in, and then also some upcoming activities. Four in the first and second, three in the second. Just this last month, and it was coincidental with the recognition you just had, we hosted our fifth career fair in the month of March in the Cox Center. We continue to host these very successful career fairs which are really designed to keep our talent from our 17 universities in this region. We had in excess of 900 students at the career fair this year. We had 83 employers who were at booths and who had not only job opportunities available, but also internship programs. These are both fall and spring semester internships, and those intern then lead to summer internships, which we, the chamber, put on. One interesting thing we saw in this year's career fair is that we are attracting a lot of students outside of Oklahoma to Oklahoma. That's kind of been a first. We've talked historically about losing our students to other markets, and now just the opposite is happening. And that has been a big part of what our goal has been. And in fact, a recent ranking by portfolio.com lists Oklahoma City as the sixth-best city in the nation for young professionals. So I think we're making a lot of headway in what we're trying to accomplish. And as you recently saw in population and unemployment numbers, we're now at 6.7 percent, which again is the lowest unemployment rate of any metropolitan city in the United States. A second thing about recent activities. In mid-March, we did something rather unusual. We had a trip to China. And that is because of a relationship we have with our National Professional Association. We have an agreement with an individual who does this just strictly for chambers of commerce across the United States. And we had 124 people who went on that trip to four different cities for eight days in China, Beijing, Shanghai, Hangzhou, and Suzhou. And I believe one of the council members, Meg Salyer, was on that trip, too. We got phenomenal response. We surveyed the participants, and everyone really enjoyed it. And really, it's a cultural immersion. It was really nothing to do with economic development, but really to let people see firsthand what is going on in Asia, specifically what's going on in the big cities of China. A third thing. Actually, the last quarter was a decent quarter as it relates to primary job announcements. What we're seeing is our pipeline is getting bigger. But unfortunately, what we're not seeing are a lot of decisions still being made. So there's still a lot of tire kicking out there by companies for expansion purposes, but they're really not pulling the trigger on it, with a couple exceptions. I think you recently saw Mike Mickelson, Connor, and Boole announced a new location here with 85 employees. That's a new company that's in the mortgage management business. Paycom announced 500 additional jobs here. And when you add up the other activities we've seen in the last quarter, we were involved in right at 900 new primary jobs in this last quarter and just under $20 million in new capital investment. So that's beginning to show some decent signs and some turnaround that we hadn't seen before. Final thing under recent news. We also have good news as it relates to the visitor industry. Our convention sales numbers are up compared to a year ago at this same time. Whether you look at the number of groups or you look at the room nights booked, both are up. So those are very positive signs. We also have some significant future meetings that are booked. I'll mention just a cup, a couple of them. One being the National Association of Postmasters, a second being the National Indian Education Association, and a third being the National Square Dance Convention, which is one we've hosted several years. Another, though not so large, but very high-profile group that has been booked here is the National Sports Forum, which is a gathering of the top sales, marketing, and promotion executives from professional sports throughout the U.S. So we're excited about that one because of the exposure that we will get in the sports industry. With regard to some upcoming activities, just three things I wanted to mention. One, I think you're aware of it, but if you're not, the Convention and Visitor Bureau offices are relocating from the Sheridan Office Building to our offices at 123 Park Avenue. And actually, this is a return back to our offices. At one time, we moved them out because we had no space, but we've been able to take down space in an adjoining building and expand one of our floors. So we're moving the Convention and Visitor Bureau back to our offices, and they should be operational this coming Monday. So over this weekend, that's when that exact move will occur. A second thing has to do with the U.S. Conference of Mayors. This is a very important event for Oklahoma City thanks to Mayor Cornet and his leadership and his influence within that organization to get that conference here. We are organizing an Oklahoma City Host Committee. We're not just doing it now. We've been doing it, it seems like, for about a year now to conduct all of the events that are periphery to this very important conference. There's a lot of activities that take place after the actual 8:00 to 5:00 sort of conference that is here, and it's a great deal of work on the part of a whole lot of individuals and raising a whole lot of money to support this event and to make it the kind of event we want the mayors from across the country to go away from talking about Oklahoma City. So this is a great opportunity to showcase Oklahoma City, and we're going to make sure it's done correctly. The final thing I wanted to mention is Ford Oklahoma City 4. For those of you who are not familiar with it, that's our five-year economic development strategy. We've been through three of these, 15 years. We're getting ready to launch our next five years. So we're in the process right now of raising that money. We're raising funds for 2011 through 2015. This is a private sector fund that leverages public sector involvement and contributions to conduct economic development activities. Our goal is 17.5 million. That's up 3 million from the last five years. We're well on our way. We're over 70 percent of our goal already. And we still have a significant amount of time to reach our goal and exceed it. And what is very rewarding to us is that there is strong, strong confidence in the business community here toward this particular program. We're seeing a number of companies significantly step up their investment from what it was five years ago. So in light of what the economic times are, we're still seeing very positive optimism from the business community here and seeing that not only through their words, but also through their checkbooks. And we're seeing their commitments to that. So with that, I'll conclude and be happy to answer any questions, Mayor, if any council members or yourself have any.
Roy, thanks for your work. Any comments or questions from the council? Yeah, Pat?
Just a quick question on the Convention and Visitor Bureau. It's moving into your building. It'll be on the first floor?
No, it'll be on the third floor.
Third floor.
And actually, we have opened a visitor center in the Cox Center, and that is really where visitors are directed to. The CVB staff, as it kind of currently exists where it is, is kind of more the back office of the CVB. And the front office is really in the Cox Center, high visibility, working on signage right now with the city. And that's where visitors will be directed.
That addresses my concern about accessibility. Thank you.
Exactly.
Yeah, Larry?
Yeah, Roy. Am I correct, this weekend's going to be a busy weekend in Oklahoma City also? And the street rides coming to town and also prepaid legal having their annual convention here?
There's more things happening this weekend than what you would want. Yes, it will be a very busy week. Hotels are full. Restaurants will be full. Streets will be full. Yes, this will be a very, very busy weekend in Oklahoma City, which is good.
All right, Roy, thanks very much for your work.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks.
We're on to item 3D of the council agenda. I think we will need to go into executive session to discuss the pay adjustments, if necessary, for senior staff. How about a motion to move that to executive session? All right, cast your votes on that, and that item is moved to executive session. Item 4 is the Journal of Council Proceedings. Item 4A is to receive the Journal of Council Proceedings for March 30th. And item B is to approve the Journal of Council Proceedings for March 23rd. All right, cast your votes on the journal. It passes unanimously. And we're on to item 5, which is request for uncontested continuances.
Mr. Mayor, a couple this morning. On page 12, page 12, under item 8F1, item G2, southeast 35th Street. Whereas, if that be stricken, the owner has removed. Still on page 12, under item 8G1, item L, 8224, northwest 86th Street. Whereas, if that be stricken, the owner has secured.
All right, any other requests for uncontested continuances? Or we'll recess the council meeting, convene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. There are two items. Okay, we have a motion in a second. We're voting on the MFA. Any comments or questions here? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC MFA, convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority. There is one item. All right, we have a motion in a second. Any comments or questions on the item under the PPA? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Adjourn OC PPA, convene as the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust. We have two items. Comments or questions on the EAT? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. We'll adjourn the OCEAT and reconvene the council meeting with a consent docket. All right, are there any individual considerations?
Mayor?
Yes, Meg?
If I could just mention 6AA, please.
AA, okay.
Excuse me, Your Honor, 6I, item?
I, Pat, all right. Larry?
6O, Your Honor.
O?
O.
Okay. Sam? AB. All right, Meg, you want to get started with double A?
F.
That's okay, Sam, sure. Very quickly, this is just an agreement, actually a maintenance agreement with the Gatewood Neighborhood Association to continue to do some work in a park. I wanted to recognize those neighbors. Gatewood is a very active, one of our historic neighborhoods, and they just do a terrific job. And I'd like to compliment them for their work in this park on northwest 17th Street.
All right, Pat, item I.
Just a brief comment, Your Honor. This is a project to improve accessibility at Lake Hefner Children's Park. ADA sidewalks and drives will be put in. And I think it's just an attempt by the Parks Department and a very well-appreciated and very necessary attempt to make our park facilities as accessible to as many citizens as we possibly can. I'd like to commend the Parks Department for bringing this project forward. Thank you.
All right, Larry, item O.
Yes, Your Honor. This item deals with the I-40 and Morgan Road interchange. And if Dennis Crowe is here, I thought it might be appropriate for Dennis just to give the council a brief overview of the status of this project. It's now estimated to be almost a $30 million project, and it's been moving forward for a number of years. So Dennis, if you would, just give us a brief overview of where we stand.
Sure will. As is the case with many projects with ODOT that are done within our city limits, the city was responsible for the engineering on the project to acquire the right-of-way and to get the utilities relocated. And on this project, we're also putting in some bond money to supplement what ODOT's spending. The plans are complete, and they are into ODOT for review. All of the right-of-way has been acquired. There are seven utility companies involved other than our own water and sewer. Three of those relocations have already been made. The other four should be completed by August 1st. The, as I said, there's water and sewer that's owned by the city of Oklahoma City, and those projects will be bid out through our utilities department and hopefully relocated by August 1st. If all that happens, the project will be on September ODOT letting. So citizens should see a lot of utility work. They should have already seen a lot of utility work going on out there. They'll continue to see more. And hopefully, the project will be under construction by the late fall. We're looking at an 18- to 24-month construction period on the project.
All right, Dennis, thank you. Sam, item AB.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to recognize the names George and Denise Waters,[1680.34] Just wanted to recognize the names George and Denise Waters, who are donating a bench to Edgemere Park. Unique in this bench is that it will not carry the donors' names but rather the inscription I'd just like to read. "One man with courage is a majority," by Thomas Jefferson. "Please sit and contemplate how you can make a difference." So rather than carry the name of the donor, I thought very nicely done, nice touch to George and Denise Waters.
It's nice. Any other comments or questions on the consent docket? Skip?
Yes, Mayor, I have F1 and 2.
All right.
And I would like to recognize, is it Allen Chapel? Are there members from Allen Chapel here, Reddick Potts? Would you please stand? This is one of the programs under the Neighborhood Conservation Committee that came before our committee, and in an effort to try to revitalize the area northeast 1300 block, northeast 16th, they have taken an initiative to revitalize in reference to affordable housing. And this was a project that was, actually came down to Ron Walters Construction and Allen Chapel Foundation, and we were really pleased that the two organizations was able to accept what money was left in order to divide it equally in an effort to do something as it relates to the revitalization of housing in the northeast quadrant of Oklahoma City. And so I want to thank the pastor and all the members and the congregation in reference to their hard work and their concern as it relates to the revitalization of northeast Oklahoma City. So I just want to thank you all for being here and your grant being approved, and so keep up the good work. Thank you.
Brian?
It's just the completion of a series of land transactions, giving a piece of surplus property to South Oklahoma City Community College. And Dr. Seacrest was here before. He didn't come this morning, but this does wrap up that planning process and completion of that transaction.
All right. Looks like we're ready to vote the consent docket? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Nothing on the concurrence docket today, so we're on to item eight. These are items that require a separate vote. We'll start with a series of zoning cases. The first is in Ward 4. It's an ABC issue. The address is 4700 South I-35 on the Service Road. Pete? We have one person who has signed up to speak.
Actually, just the applicants here.
Good morning. I'm Lynn. Can we get a?
Hold on a second. Let me make a comment before you start. You and I talked on the phone, I think, earlier, and I had the wrong address. I was given an address on southeast 44th Street that I went by to look at, and so I had also talked to the protestors before, and I had given both sides of the argument the indication that I was in favor of their position, looking at two different pieces of property. When I discovered that the right piece of property, I felt, I feel like it's really only fair that I asked it to be moved off for a couple of weeks and give me a chance to really look at it again. I'm not sure I've changed my mind about, from your standpoint, nor the other side, but I feel very badly about it. I went by, took the time to go by and look. I told you I had a hard time finding it. It was obvious that I had a hard time finding it because I wasn't looking in the right place.
Right.
Kind of like looking for your car keys in the garage when they're in the bathroom. But I feel bad about it, and I really, rather than have you make the presentation now, I would rather set it off for a couple of weeks, if that's okay, unless you have some really terrible objection to that.
No, that's fine.
This is, and you can go ahead and have a seat, because I have some things I want to, and I appreciate, I appreciate your courtesy. I apologize, it's my fault, really. I'd like to ask a question of staff before. What, where my dilemma is, is that the recommend, I see the county, the Planning Commission recommendation was a very close call on it, and the way the ordinance reads is that facilities like this cannot be located within 300 feet of a residentially zoned property. Is that, am I right about that?
No, there's a notice from, oh, okay, you're talking about the setback.
Right.
That's correct.
The, and this is 500 feet from our one zone property, but it abuts an RV park. And the RV park is, in a sense, residentially zoned property, because people that live in RV parks, many times, I told the gentleman that operates the park, indicated he had one residence that had been in the RV park for five years. It's kind of like a mobile home park, you have a place to park your vehicle. But most of those, even albeit temporary, they're residential properties. And what I'd like to do is staff to look at whether or not there's really any correlation between an RV park being residential, being a residentially zoned property. And we may just be down here where what the statute says, or what the ordinance says, it says they're not, but the fact is, they are, as a practical matter. And I'd just like some feedback from staff before I make up my mind about how I feel about it. The council will be free to do, obviously, what they want to do, but it seems to me that residentially zoned property ought to have, ought to include property where people reside. And RV parks are places where people reside. They are not necessarily places where people stay only one day. I suspect the turnover rate in most RV parks are not dramatically different than some high-turnover apartments. And if it were apartment zoning, we wouldn't be, we wouldn't be where we are.
The ordinance has always recognized that as a commercial use.
I understand, I understand.
I'll get with legal and we'll talk about it.
I'd just like some conversation about it before I, because I'm not persuaded by some of the other arguments that were made at the Planning Commission by the hotel, for example. I'm not, I understand the guy's concern. If he doesn't want it, he doesn't want it, but that's not, I'm not persuaded by that. But I am a little concerned that we treat an RV park as totally as a commercial use as opposed to a residential use. If it is a commercial use, it's certainly a special kind of commercial use that's different than a grocery store or something else. So that's my, I'd like to have some feedback on that between now and when we vote, two weeks from now. So I'd move it be continued for two weeks.
Okay, that's April 20th.
April 20th. Ray and Robert want to come back in two weeks, or did you want to speak something today? All right, okay. They'll be back in two weeks as well. We have a motion in a second. Any other comments or questions on this item? We're going to defer it. All right, cast your votes on the deferral. It passed unanimously. Item 8A2 is a zoning case in Ward 5. The address is 17401 South Santa Fe Avenue. It's currently double-A agricultural, and it would become our one single-family residential district. Brian?
I've had no protests, so I move approval.
Okay, any comments or questions on item 8A2? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8A3 is also in Ward 5. The address is 2828 Southwest 89th Street. It's currently a pud and would become a new simplified planned unit development. Brian?
Same story, no protests, move approval.
All right. Any comments or questions on this item? All right, cast your votes, and that zoning is approved. Item 8B is to close an easement in Ward 2. Sam, you okay with this one?
Yes, and I understand there's no adverse impact to the public. Is there anybody here that would be protesting it? Didn't think so. Move for approval.
All right, cast your votes on 8B, and it passed unanimously. Item 8C is a zoning case in Ward 8. The address is 641 Northwest 164th Street. It's currently a planned unit development, and the idea today is to turn it into a new pud. We have a handful of people who have signed up to speak. It's in Ward 8. Pat?
Thank you, Your Honor. In the almost five years I've been on the council, this is probably the most difficult zoning case that's come before me. It's, I've received more emails on this case than probably any other item that I've been involved in. It is a case, as the protestors pointed out in their brief, that it doesn't really relate to whether there will be apartments here or not. A lot of the emails I received were against the idea of apartment complex being in there, but this property is currently zoned R4, which would permit the construction of apartment. It was zoned that way back in the middle 80s, and a lot of the development has occurred since that time. The question before us today, and we'll hear presentations from the protestant and the applicant, about alternative apartment complexes. And the question we have to answer today is which apartment complex of the two that may be built out there is the better solution for the public and the citizens out there? I asked if the protestors wanted to go first. They declined, and so I guess I'd like to call on the applicant now to make a presentation. At that time, then we can have the protestors who have signed up to speak, and they're represented by Mr. Groves, and I'm sure he'll have some words to say for us as well.
Mayor members of the council, my name is Brian Kuhn with Kuhn Engineering. I represent the applicant on this property. Mr. Ryan explained the case, I think, pretty well. What you have before you that I've handed out is a comparison sheet, and I understand the neighbors don't want apartments. Not too many people want to live next to apartments. A lot of people live in apartments. I've lived in an apartment, and maybe you all have too. So apartments are a necessary form of residence, so they are needed in town. This property, like Mr. Ryan said, was zoned back in the 80s for apartments at 14.52 units per acre. Part of that original PUD was the office park that you see to the southwest of this property. That property is not part of this application. That property was sold years ago. One of this property's owned by Oklahoma Christian University, has been owned by them a long time. It was donated by, I don't know if it was the developer of Lexington or one of the additions around, don't know who, I know who he was, but I don't know if he owned the surrounding property, but he donated it to the university a long, long time ago. Property is bounded by two creeks, one of being Chisholm Creek. Large drainage basin drains across this property. So for many, many years, up until about a month ago, no one really knew how many acres you truly had that were out of the flood zone. There's a flood map that FEMA issues that showed that it was about five to six acres could be built on. In the southern piece, there is a piece up north, there's three lots up north that could be built behind as far as land that's out of the flood zone. We don't plan on building on that right now. We don't plan on building a bridge to go across. But until recently, we didn't know exactly how many acres there were. So when Oklahoma Christian decided to market the property, I think one of the questions a lot of people probably asked was how many acres can I build on? And no one really knew. This case has prompted a flood study that has been going on, started well over a year ago. We took it to a certain stage of to which we were pretty confident of how many acres were out of the flood zone. And then protestors, as well as the city, wanted it taken further, so we did that. We have now come up and have determined we have nine acres that we can build on in that open area. Like I said, the current flood map shows less, but we've done a lot of flood studies on a lot of properties, even if you want to date it back to Valverde, the Greens, part of Gladi, it was in a flood zone that we've built in. So we understand flood zones, we understand FEMA, we understand the rules that you have to go through to get that done. So we have done that, at least to the city. It has satisfied Mr. Adir Agarwal, that is in charge of storm order here in Oklahoma City. He has looked at our study and has given a verbal approval at this point. It's not gone to FEMA yet. It's a very expensive process to go on further. We have chosen not to do that because we don't have zoning yet. So I think one of the things that has changed since it was originally zoned is now we do know how many acres can be built on. And I've shown that on this map. I don't know if you, this has a lot of lines on it, but it shows creek on this side, heavily tree, creek on that side, heavily tree. Like I said, both creeks enter in, flow to the north. This is the property we're talking about. There are two areas that right now, if you can still hear me, there are two areas that right now, the existing flood line comes very close to the neighborhood. It comes up into this lot here now, currently, with, if we go away today, the flood line is still where it is. Comes up here, it comes close to this street right here. One of the things that the city will require, whether we build this project, whether someone builds 235, PUD 235, or whether someone comes in and does it as an office park, it will prompt Adir to have the ability to say, I need you to protect that creek bank. We've got a lot of creek banks in Oklahoma City that aren't very protected right now, that no one's developed them yet, so there's really no authority that he has. But once someone develops this as anything, they're going to have to, they're going to have to armor that bank, okay? Which means riprap. The city did a storm or a sanitary sewer project over here, extended a main line, and at that time, they put riprap over on this creek over here. But right here, as you can see, that yellow line, and right here where it gets close to the street, it's right-of-way, someone will have to armor that bank someday. So in this, if we get through this, we get our building permit, we will have to armor part of the bank, not all of it, but part of it. Anywhere it exceeds five feet per second on the velocity, we have to armor that bank. On the comparison chart that I've given you, currently, like Mr. Ryan said, it's currently zoned R4 apartments. That's what we're asking for, is R4 apartments. PUD 235 allowed two-story buildings. I think a lot of you have received probably lots of emails, lots of phone calls. Up until about a week and a half ago, we had three-story buildings in part of our property. Planning Commission approved this case. On the drawing that's on the screen right now, there are four buildings that are shown as three-story. Mr. Williams asked us during Planning Commission if we would take the furthest west building and turn that into a two-story. At Planning Commission, I agreed. Since that time, we have taken it down to all two-story buildings. So I think a lot of the conversation, I don't know what your conversations were on the phone, but I have a feeling a lot of the neighbors didn't like three-story buildings. And that's one of the things I read in Mr. Groves' letter many, many times, is we don't want three-story apartments, so we've done away with three-story. We've added more buildings, but not more units. We're still at 240 units, so we've not increased our unit count, but we're two-story. None of our buildings are closer than 150 feet to any of the property, to any of the residential property corners. Not only their houses, but this property corners. At Planning Commission, my comment was I was, I had one that was 185 feet, but now that we've added another building or two, we're at 150. So 150 feet away from any residentially zoned property. The current PUD 235 allows 14.52 units per acre. This new PUD allows 9.9, so the density has gone down. You're going to hear some arguments about how density is calculated. How we've calculated is how it's been calculated in Oklahoma City for as long as I've been doing this, that's 26 years. I think staff, I believe that staff would, will tell you that you take your total land that you own, and you divide how many units you want to build, and that's how you figure your density. It's not based on what's just buildable. If you had that, a lot of green belts will go away in the future. You get to utilize your creeks and your green belts and your lakes to counter, to count for your density. It's always been figured that way. The current PUD 235 allows 350 units. This PUD has a maximum of 240, so it's a lot less units. The current PUD 235 in the south, approximately 200 feet, it's limited to four units per building, and then eight units per building north of that line. This PUD, as you've seen on our site plan, does not have that limit. There's very few apartment buildings that are built with just four units per building, so we have that out. The current PUD 235 does not, does not have any architectural standards. You know, years ago, we started with the 50% brick, rock, stone. It was language we probably didn't even think about back in the 80s, so there was no architectural standards back then, other than for the office park, which is not part of this application. Right now, what could happen, and I'm, what could happen right now is that apartments could be built under 235 with really no guidelines or rules as to what the siding could be. It could be metal siding, it could be wood siding, it could be hardy board, it could have brick, but there's no, there's nothing in the PUD that spells out what that is. What we have in ours is 60% minimum of brick, rock, or stone. Now, if you've seen the apartments, and I know it's a sore subject, but there's apartments down at 89th and Western, where I believe are 100% hardy board, that could be built here. There's apartments that the same developer has built at Edmund Road and Western, which are 60% brick. I think if you've had a chance to be up there and look at those, you'll, I think you'll see that they're a good-looking building. We've done the same thing, not with this developer, but at the legacy apartments on Eastern, at Eastern, at Memorial. They have actually three-story, they're 60% brick, and they back up to homes that the same developer built. So you've got some developers that feel like apartments and homes go together. Turner and Company did both. In the current PUD, there's no final plating required at all. In the new PUD, there is a final plat required, so you will see it again before you to accept the final plat. I don't have it on this comparison chart, but it is in the new PUD. About a year or two ago, we came up with a new standard that if you don't have a very specific site plan, that you have to come before Planning Commission with a, it's hard to say, specific site plan, which you, which Planning Commission sees, shows how the buildings will look, how landscaping is, all the amenity packages, the colors of the brick, the whole thing. With the new PUD, we have to go back before Planning Commission with that plan. With the current PUD 235, there's no more stops other than going to get a building permit, so it doesn't come back before you or the planning commission. Minor item, but it's still an item. Current PUD, dumpsters don't have to be screened, the new one they do. There's no signage requirement in the old PUD. In the new PUD, it's limited to monument signs only, so you could have some pole signs out there on the old PUD. In the old PUD, they had a 20-foot buffer along the perimeter on the east, west, and north. What we are, what we have put in the new PUD is a 50-foot buffer. I do want to couch that with saying, though, that if Adir says along that east boundary, where you can see the line that goes right by that lot, probably the fifth or sixth lot, as well as that road right-of-way, if he requires that we shore that bank, we have to shore the bank. If we do have to do that in those two areas, we will put trees along our side of the creek and on 20-foot centers to make up for that. That's going to be a requirement of the city. It's not something we choose to do, but it's going to be something that's needed to be done to protect the neighborhood. That's why I say if anybody even does single-family in that area, they're going to have to shore that bank up, some of those trees will disappear. All along, from day one, I have never, I don't believe, I don't think I ever threatened to say if we don't build this PUD that we are going to build, I don't build anything, I'm just an engineer. I'm just an engineer, I've never threatened that we're gonna build 235. I've always said, "Here's 235, it's on the table now, it's approved, this could be built." I didn't bring forward, and you see in your, in what I handed out, Exhibit A is the one that, well, it's not that one, because that's the three-story, but Exhibit A is what is the site plan with the new PUD. Exhibit B is the site plan with PUD 235. First Planning Commission meeting, which was well over a year ago, I didn't have Exhibit B, because we didn't have any intent of building 235. One of the planning commissioners asked me, "What could you build right now?" I said, "I don't know, because we don't plan on building what's there right now," but he asked me if I would do that drawing, so I did that drawing. From that time on, it has been stated that we have threatened to build 235, and we have not threatened to do that. Whether my developer wants to build 235, if this gets defeated, I don't know. But someone could. And I think, I think this developer, even though he stubbed his toe on 89th and Western, I think he's proven at Edmund Road and Western that he can build, and the people he works with can build a nice apartment project with brick. And that's, all along, I've said, I think apples to apples, you've got 235, or you've got this new PUD. I don't think it's an apartment versus no apartments. If, and we've heard that if this wasn't zoned apartments now, we probably would have been defeated a long, long time ago, and we wouldn't be pursuing it. But I do think there's currently, I mean, I know, you can build apartments there now, it's, "Do you like the old apartment PUD, or do you like the new apartment PUD?" And to me, that's the question. And to me, this one has a lot more restrictions in it, it'll be a lot more costly to build this way, it's fewer units. The PUD 235, the lad I've given you, I think had like 260 units, we're asking for 240. So, even if it was 240 versus 240, do you like the new restrictions or, or not? Be glad to answer any questions, I think that's all that I have. I know you all have spent a lot of time on this deal, and it's, I think it's important.
Planning Commission, a lot of three-story.
Brian, when you, between Planning Commission and your deliberations up until today, you have removed the three-story apartment to maximum two stories, to accommodate the same number of units. Where were the additional buildings added on this, I guess, drawing B that we're looking at?
The current, there was a detention pond that was larger, so we've split up the detention pond and put it in two areas. One of the things that's important on this, too, is that detention is not required on this property. We have shown some detention ponds, I feel like it's, it's a prudent thing to do, so we took out some of that area and moved that detention pond to another area, and they just rearranged some of the buildings. They probably, I don't remember if we added three more buildings, 432, we may have only added one more, one or two buildings, because we eliminated four buildings, which would be 32 units, which one, one larger building would take care of that, or two. Because a large, four, I mean, the four-plex deal would have 16, 72 buildings. So, we just, we just rearranged some things. That's why I went, I was 185 feet from a residential, residential property line, now I'm 150, minimum. The rest, some of them are over 300 feet from the homes. So, that's, that's the difference. So.
One thing further, and this may be a little extraneous to this project, but when this developer building, builder is learning from the experience you, you related to us, has he considered at any time, and perhaps even in this project, when the, when the site is as tight as it is to accommodate the number of units that he's designing, looked at underground parking?
We have not talked about that, no sir. And that's one of the things when, one of the items I brought out of Planning Commission, when we wanted to do this PUD versus the old one, that one has more footprint on the site. Same number of parking spaces, it doesn't matter, your footprint, it's per unit, but the PUD 235 will have more concrete on the ground, less green space. If you can go three-story, you eliminate a lot of, of buildings pad, does that make sense? So, he wanted to go to three, most of them being built today are going three-story, because it allows more green space. So, when he went to two, it eliminated whatever two buildings takes up, green space-wise, that's what happened. But we have not talked about underground, no sir.
I just notice you don't have as much, but you still have a considerable amount of concrete surface.
Yes, sir.
And that, that would just really cost, yes, there's, without asking about cost, I understand that, but it certainly would.
Yeah, going to three, going to two-story adds cost to the project, because you've added more plumbing, you've added more concrete slab, you've added more money to it. That's why everybody, most everybody's going to three-story now, because you can still do it, not, I mean, you still have as many stools and tubs and all that, but as far as underground plumbing, you eliminate a lot of that, and you eliminate a concrete pad by going three-story. But we're okay with two. But no, we have not looked at underground parking.
Larry, then Gary.
Brian, a question if I could, sir. In, in the original 235, evidently, there was some mention made of footpath, site-proof fencing, and a buffer zone, and the protesters are saying that there are no footpaths on the new plan, there's no site-proof, site-proof fencing involved, and there's inadequate buffer zone. I wonder if you'd address that for me, please?
Okay, PUD 235 has a 20-foot buffer zone. The new PUD has 50-foot buffer zone, okay? So, there's your apples to apples. One of the comments was, they wanted a, a site-proof fence, but they wanted us to put it on our side of the creek. You know, if they want it on their side of the creek, on their property line, then they eliminate their view of the creek. So, I never did pursue doing a site-proof fence. What was your third item?
Footpaths.
Footpaths, we have the sidewalks that just go through our neighborhood, you know, just through the apartments, we don't have paths through the creek and any of that thing. Which, I can see the bad side of that, is if I did say, "We're gonna put trails all through the creeks," then they're, then they may say, "Well, we don't want your kids walking through our creek." I don't know. We just don't have creek, we don't have paths going down through the creek. I don't like building paths through a creek, because that's where kids are gonna go, and if it's raining real hard, you don't want your kids down there. There's a lot of water goes through there.
Excuse me. You mentioned the, the flood study that you did and all that, and you used the term "protecting the creek bank," would have to happen now that that study has been done. The original PUD had a lot of verbiage about leave, not only leaving the trees that are there, but planting more trees to increase that vegetation and that creek look hood and all of that. Are you saying that all of that would go away, even under the OPUD?
No, sir. Under, no, sir. Under Oklahoma City's regulation, if you develop that property, whether it's P235, this new PUD, or if someone comes in someday and says, "I want to build single-family houses," which the neighbors would love, if someone develops that property at all, seventh floor over there is gonna require that they armor that bank. Anywhere the water exceeds five feet per second, you have to armor the bank, meaning riprap. If you put in riprap, the trees are gone in that area, not above the bank, but on the, on the, on the slope, okay? So, whether it's us, whether it's somebody else under 235, or anybody, they're gonna require, the minute you get a building, building permit, they're gonna require that you armor that bank. So, it's not this project that would, that will prompt that, it will be any development of this, of this property. Did I answer that okay?
Yeah. So, it's, not all the trees would be gone, but any of them on the creek banks and the bottom of the creek would be gone.
Just where it exceeds five feet per second. Right now, there's three, there's three spots that that happens. But as you can see from that map that's up there, and maybe some of your own documents, the creek bank gets very close to the residential property line, and that needs to be fixed. That's gonna get worse and worse and worse as more development happens upstream. So, but Adir has no authority to go tell the current owner, "Go, go spend some money on that creek." We have other areas in the city right now, the city's having to spend some money, because we're getting ready to lose some streets, because creeks erode, and as you can see, it gets very close to that property line. So, it won't be, this property would prompt it, this project, but any project will do the same thing. I'm not, I'm not rearranging the flow line of the creek in any way. We want the trees as bad as anybody. I mean, an apartment with trees is just like a house with trees. People want that. People love to live by the trees. That's, the neighbors love it, our residents would love it. So, we're gonna save every tree we can, if and when they say, "Here's the area that you," I mean, there's no if to it. When we, when we have to riprap some areas and pull out trees, because you don't want trees in that slope, because they get washed out, water erodes around them, it makes it worse, why you can't put trees on a dam either. If we have to do that, where we have to do that, we'll plant trees on our side to compensate for that.
All right, over here.
I have another question, Mayor.
Okay.
If you could, please. This handout you gave us, A and B, is these representations of how you would build under the two different PUDs?
Yes, sir.
So, B is how you would build under 235.
B is how you could build under 235. That is, that is, is getting as many units as you can on that nine acres under PUD 235. As if you notice, 164th, that has the smaller buildings, those are four-plexes, once you get past that line, you can go to eight-plex.
You, you show under both of them that you're going to build, or could build, units at 622 square feet per unit of living space.
Okay.
I thought 235 had a much larger requirement than 622.
I don't think there's any requirements for square feet, if there is, I don't recall it. We can look, I'll have, Cindy's got it here, I'll have her look. If it is, then we would have to make those figure, I'm not sure of that. We gave that to the architect, as well as with the PUD, and said, you know, "Do what you can with 235."
Okay. Brian, then Skip, then Meg.
The PUDs, these are minimum standards.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, why could 1393 not be built on 235? What is, what is, what are the items that would prevent that from being built?
The four-plex in the front, and the eight-plex in the back. We could, we could do, I mean, that's the only, that's the only, right now, it was the three-story that we were hung up with, that's why we came back with the new PUD. The three-story has now gone away. He didn't want to build four-plexes in that further south strip, and he didn't want to do eight-plexes, the rest of it. He would rather do some areas, some units at 16. Because four-plex apartments, just, they just don't, they don't build them anymore. Ten, that's not what he chose to do. So, three-story, like I said, three-story's gone, it's just that, it's the unit mix of the four and the eight units. Other than that, you could do brick, you could do lots of things under 235, above and beyond what 235 requires.
Okay, so, so what is the total number of units difference, then?
I've got 240 in my current PUD.
Okay.
In the existing 235, at 14.52, calculated the way that the city calculates it, you could do 350 units.
What I'm, I guess what I'm asking is, is if, if he built, basically, if he built 1393, what he's proposing, under the 235 PUD?
Okay.
Okay, you said there was, there was these, there was an eight-plex and a four-plex. What does that do to the number of units under 1393? How does that, how does that affect the total? Does it affect the total?
If we go 235 with smaller units, you could build more units.
Okay.
Did that?
Now, I guess, I guess what I'm trying to figure out is, why can't, why can't, if he wants to build this, why can't he just build this property? There's, like you said, there's an eight-plex and a four, eight-plex in the back, four-plex in the front, are the restrictions in 235?
He could.
Okay.
He, he does not want to build four-plexes, and he doesn't want to build eight-plexes. So, he's, so what, the real deal today is, can we build bigger buildings than an eight-plex or a four-plex? And, is that, I don't know if I'm answering, I don't understand the question.
If you remove the four-plex and the eight-plex.
Okay, okay.
How many units can you build under the proposed 1393?
If you, if you said somehow magically, we could do away with that restriction under 235, we'd build 240 units. You'd build, you'd build layout A.
But why do you make it greater?
I, I don't want to do B. I never said I was gonna do B, it was a request from Planning Commissioner, said, "What could you build under 235?" We did not want to build 235. That's why we never, it was a layout that was requested by Planning Commission to say, "Show us the oranges and the apples." Because if I wanted to do 235, we would have never been here. A year and a half ago, we would have gone and gotten a building permit for 235, but he doesn't want to build 235. So, I didn't, I didn't prepare that drawing, what we want to do, it's just so that they, Planning Commission could see, "Okay, show us what could happen." Is that better?
Well, I just, I'm, I'm still trying to figure out why you would go through all of this trouble, if you could still build this high, this higher quality development, minus these two, this eight-plex and four-plex issue.
Because, that's the only reason, because he doesn't.
The only reason.
That's it. He doesn't want to build the four-plexes, he doesn't want to build eight-plexes. There's no other secrets that I know of that are out there, other than that, other than we wanted three-story up until about 10 days ago.
And he doesn't want to do that because economically it doesn't work?
It's, it's more expensive, you build more footprints, it's more underground plumbing, it's just more footprints to do that. So, he could build 235 with the brick, with all these things we're putting in here, but he would have four-plexes and eight-plexes. Like I said, if it could magically, if those two issues go, magically could go away, I think that's what you get with 1393, and you get restrictions.
Well, I, you know, I'm, the problem I have is this, we put the burden on the homeowners, that when they move into an area and there's an empty field, it is their burden to know what could go there. And if something is built there, just like happened in Southwest 89th and Western, those, those homeowners around there were just mad as they could be. And I told them, I said, I said, "Unfortunately, the law is not on your side on that, you should have known." But then when, when a developer comes in and wants to build a project, then we discount what the residents want. And I think they can make the argument, "Well, when we bought this, this is what we, this is what we thought was gonna be built here, and now you're wanting to change it, and we don't want it changed." And that's the hard, that's the hard part of this. The, the flip side of that is, and we've had this conversation in public, and I don't mind having this conversation on cameras that we have in public, and that is that I know what kind of garbage that this guy can build. And I have absolutely no respect for the way it was done, and I have absolutely no respect for the way that, that the homeowners are treated. And I have the, the fortunate opportunity to deal with some wonderful developers in South Oklahoma City, high integrity, they, they build to maximum, I mean, just beautiful projects, and then we have this, this sore thumb sticking out that looks like that it was built, you know, 50 years ago and had no standards. And so, you know, it's, it's hard for me to sit here when the homeowners are saying, on one hand, "We, we want to keep the PUD that's there, we would, we would rather have that." I want to grant them that. I think that they have the right to say that, especially when there's 80% protest at Planning Commission. But I also know, if, if that's what they want, then they really all look at, because my, my guess is, is that if he had 235, he would not build to maximum standards, he would build to minimum standards, that's been his track record. So, with that being said, you know, the homeowners have, have gone out of their way. The other thing that really bothered me is I asked my Planning Commissioner, I don't typically get into his business. I, I ask him to do a job, and he does a wonderful job, and so I don't, I don't meddle in, in his affairs. But I did ask him on this one thing, I said, "Do you know how many protesters were, that there were?" And our conversation led me to believe that the Planning Commission did not know that there was 80% legal protest on this. Is that correct? Is that factually accurate?
I believe on the agenda, that it has a percentage over on the left side that shows how many protests. I believe it's on there, because when I see those things, I think, "Oh, man." The room may not be full, but I believe it shows on this, on the agenda, how many there are, doesn't it?
The, typically that does, but the protesters didn't submit that petition for the Planning Commission, they, they thought it went right to council. Excuse me. So, we didn't calculate, the Planning Commission didn't know there were 84%, because that, that really came to us after the Planning Commission. But there was, there was an indication that there was protest.
It's my, it's my assertion that, that based on the indifference that I feel from the Planning Commission, because I feel like that the Planning Commission could have gone the planning commission, because I feel like that the planning commission could have gone either way on this, that if they would have known that there was this level of protest, we would not have here for approval today. And based on that, if, if, if Pat wants to, I, I would doubt that he does, but, you know, I would like, I'd like to go back to, at least go back to planning and let them look at it again with the protests and see if they would change their mind with 80% protest. Because I think that's a, I think that is a huge factor in their decision-making. If they didn't have that fact, then they may have not have made the decision they would have made otherwise.
If I could just respond to that, not to be argumentative, did they know that there was like 119 protests? They just didn't know that there was a percentage? Is that right on that agenda? And Cindy, if you have the agenda for planning commission, we, I just, I don't save those usually, but it's up to him, whatever he'd like to do on that. I'm fine with that. I think, if I could just address before he starts, you know, and I understand that if I was coming in brand new with, and this was just AA land and trying to change apartments, we would have been blown out of the water a long time ago. And that's why we try to do these before, as a developer, you try to do it long before you've ever built any houses. 235 allows apartments, and it has since the early 80s before there was any restrictions. All I'm saying to you today is, here's, here's a lot of restrictions on apartments. What's there now was there back in the 80s with no restrictions. So I've said it enough, I think.
Okay. Skip, then Meg.
Says to order? Meg was first.
It's okay.
Go ahead.
I really just have a very quick question, and it's apples to apples again.
Okay.
You talk about 14.52 density per acre in the 235A, and that there's a reduction to 9.9 in this new plan.
Right.
Is 14.52 calculated on the entire acreage, or is that calculated on the nine buildable acres?
14.52 is actually in the PUD document. That's 14.52 units per acre.
But that was calculated on what land size?
Well, in the PUD 235A, it says, says 14.52 units per acre. Is that correct? In the PUD.
For Track B only.
For Track B only, which is what this piece is.
But within Track B, it's my understanding that that's 20-plus acres, but they're only nine buildable acres.
It's 24.11 acres.
So 14.52 to 9.9 is apples to apples?
Yes, we're asking for, yes. We have the same 24 acres, same 24 acres. PUD 235 says 14.52. Ours is 9.9.
Okay.
Okay? Ours equates, if you multiply that out, ours equates out to 240 units. You take 14.52 times 200, or 24.11, comes out to two, whatever, 260.
That was not the way I understood it, so I just wanted to be very clear.
Yeah, 14.52 is in their document.
Right. I just wanted to make sure the calculation was the same. And in terms of the size, Brian?
Yes, ma'am.
It is my understanding, following to Gary's question, that the restriction in 235A was the units had to be 1,250 feet. And now we're talking about 622 feet for at least half the units.
There are no restrictions on the size of the individual units. We legally couldn't do that. That is based on the density of the entire project. For, the way it's done in the present PUD, it's 1,250 square feet total property per unit. That's not the size of the unit.
Okay.
In Oklahoma City, our four, I believe goes to 24 units per acre. And if you make, if you do that division, it comes out that the unit would be about 600. I think that's where the 652 comes from, I believe, is that calculation. Which it's hard to build 24 units to the acre. I mean, it's, I don't know if that's ever been done, so. But apples to apples, 24 acres, 24 acres. 14.52 equates to 9.9. All we wanted was 240 units. So that's, we, that's how we come up with 9.9. Okay?
All right. Skip?
Brian, the, the issue of the, the creek bank.
Yes, sir.
I'm a little concerned when you stated that with this development, that you would be responsible for part of the creek bank?
Only, we will be respons, well, we're responsible for the creek bank everywhere through the property. The rule is that you have to armor that bank if the velocity exceeds five feet per second. So where it doesn't exceed that, then there's no armor necessary. Does that make sense?
But how would you know that?
By a flood study, which we've done. And we, we have, we have identified three areas where the water exceeds five feet per second. So in those three areas, minimum, we know that we have to armor the bank in those areas.
And that's the complete study? Because you mentioned the fact that the, there's also a process you have to go through with FEMA?
Once it's approved by Oklahoma City, which Adir has given verbal approval to it, after he signs it, then it goes to FEMA.
And what if FEMA adds more restrictions to it?
The five, the five feet per second is Oklahoma City restraint, is a five, is an Oklahoma City rule.
So why would you have to go to FEMA?
Because we're trying to amend the map, because the map's not correctly stating where the true flood zone is. So you have to go to FEMA. If I didn't want to change the map at all, I don't have to go to FEMA. I still have to satisfy Adir.
You know, the, the, the issue that I have with that is that, you know, I, I know for a fact that there are a lot of properties that were developed, and, and as you stated it about the trees, a lot of people wanted to be beside a creek. And, and you mentioned the fact that the erosion, what ultimately happens, and, and the city still starts receiving those complaints and those calls when in fact, developer chose to do that. And in the long term of that, it affects people who did not have any say-so in reference to the disruption, you know, how you disturbed the land and ultimately create a major erosion of, of properties that really wasn't part of this when you, you know, laid it down on paper. And, and I'm just really concerned about how much effect that that would have on the overall residential area there.
Okay. The, whoever develops it, like I said, whether you do office park, houses, apartments, whatever you build there, they're going to have to comply with that rule. Right now, it's unarmored on that east side, and it will continue to erode, although it's been, that creek's been initial to God put it there, but it's slowly eroding. So nothing's going to happen to it at all if no development takes place. If any development takes place, they're going to have to armor that creek. So it's not just me that's going to have to do it. It's going to be whoever comes up there and develops that property, whatever the use is.
Well, I guess my question is, is when you say you're going to have to armor the creek, then you, the developer, would ultimately be responsible in the long range, in the, in the future, for any natural consequences that occur as a result?
Yes, sir.
Of erosion? Are you seeing that?
Yes, sir.
That you're going to be responsible?
We would be liable for anything that we caused. Yes, sir. Right now, there's erosion going on, and we haven't done anything out there.
Well, I know, because you haven't been given the, the authority to do anything.
Right, right.
But, so we can't debate about what's naturally here, but when you start construction, I just want to make sure that, that what you're saying is, is that this developer is buying off to be responsible for the future erosion of that area?
Yes, sir, he is.
And I just find that hard to believe.
And every, every, every development we do, every development we do in Oklahoma City, Edmond, whatever development we do, no matter what city it is, when you develop, you're responsible, you're liable for what you've caused. I mean, it happens no matter what. So whether it's this developer or the next developer, he's going to have to be responsible for what he does. And he's going to hire people like me that are going to say, we're going to protect you from getting in trouble. Because I don't want my name on that either in a lawsuit.
Brian, the, the three spots you mentioned is having the water speed going through them that would require the bank protection?
Yes, sir.
Is that based on the way the land sits now?
Yes.
Or would that include your concreting in your project?
Both, both. What you have to do is you have to run your models based on what's currently there, and you model it with what you're going to do. And it comes up with three areas.
Pat, we have two people that have signed up to speak.
No, just one quick question. I hope it's a quick question. Quick answer.
Okay.
PUD 235A, as a requirement, a restriction in there, the buildings can be no closer than 10 feet to each other.
Okay.
In your current plan, what's the minimum distance between any of your buildings?
It still has to be 10 foot or greater, 10 feet or greater. That's, that's a fire code.
Okay. But do you have any that are at 10 feet?
I don't know.
Okay.
Maybe. I mean, we might.
And I think it would be approved by council. It would be approved by council? And I'm not sure whether he wants to go first, he wants the citizens to go first.
Fair question. Eric, would you like to speak before the, the two people that have signed up to speak? All right.
Good morning, Mayor, members of the council. We need just a moment to set up an ESOL and bring some boards over. We'll just do that as quickly as we can.
Are you this one? Great.
I think. Ami Swank will be handing you a comparison chart of our own, which you can review. It, it tracks the comparison chart that Mr. Coon gave you. Attached to that comparison chart are copies of two ordinances that may turn out to be Before I proceed with my presentation, while it's fresh on your minds, I want to clear up a few things that came up in Mr. Coon's presentation. The first is the protest petition. Mr. Walters, Councilman Walters, suggested that had the planning commission known of the level of protest, perhaps the result would have been different. Perhaps. I, the reason they did not know of that protest is because we did not file the protest petition until after the planning commission hearing. There's a reason for that. And there's also a reason why the planning commission voted as it did, and I'll cover that in my presentation. Some time ago, the question arose as to when is the proper time to file the protest petition under the statute that allows it? And I had discussions with the municipal councillor's office. I think Dan Brummett will recall those discussions, and you can ask him. For years, we would file protest petition before the planning commission, three days before the planning commission hearing. After consultations with the municipal councillor's office, it was apparent that the appropriate time was three days before the council meeting. The underlying reason for this is that the protest petition does, if it exceeds 50%, does not affect the vote on the planning commission. However, if it exceeds 50%, it does affect the vote on this council. It requires a supermajority vote, which is the situation today. So you can check with Dan if you wish to, but that is the reason that we, in recent times, have been filing them three days before council, actually, in this case, a week or two. Because it only impacts the council vote. It doesn't impact the planning commission vote. So that was our decision after consultation with the municipal councillor's office as And what I've just put up on the ESOL is Mr. Coon's latest site plan for a proposed PUD 1393. And we'll get to it in just a minute, but just in case you're curious. The handout that Ms. Swank gave you a moment ago is our comparison chart that tracks the same categories that are on Mr. Coon's comparison chart. But we'll get to that in just a moment. Oh, thank you. Short one comparison chart. Let us begin at the beginning, if we may. PUD 235A was enacted in, I'm getting smiles because, because you want me to begin at the beginning, don't you? When 235A was enacted in 1986, it was the Menefys. I think you know them. They're longtime developers here in the city. They came back and amended 235A in 1986, and there was no protest. I attached to my letter brief not only the design statement for 235A, but also the minutes of the planning commission and the city council in approving it. There was no protest. Now, one of the reasons there was no protest back at the time, and there were people in the Lexington neighborhood at the time, was because PUD 235A was designed to fit in with the adjacent neighborhoods. 235A has a number of virtues. The general concept that regulates that PUD, and it's in their design statement, and as you know, the design statement, once it's approved by the council, is law. It becomes an ordinance or part of an ordinance, and this is what it says. Incorporate a unique residential character in keeping with existing residences surrounding the site. That's what 235A was intended to do, and that's what it says. It's in the design statement. You can read it. It was limited to eightplexes and fourplexes, and for a reason. Because eightplexes and fourplexes are more in keeping with the character of the surrounding residential neighborhoods than these elongated kinds of buildings that the developer presently has in mind. The density was limited to 1,4.52 per acre. Now, the information that Mr. Coon gave you a little bit ago in comparing densities is inaccurate. It is wrong, and I think I'm going to be able to prove that to you. The minimum separation between buildings, you already know. There's a promise to preserve existing vegetation along the creeks, promises site-proof screening with nearby residences, six, six-foot site-proof screen, buffer zone. In summary, PUD 235A was intended to, and did, set standards that are compatible with these surrounding neighborhoods. PUDs are, as you all know, a very special negotiated zoning district. They are a creature of statute. We have a statute in Oklahoma that allows municipalities such as this one to zone by PUD. And that statute, Title 11, 43-110, says promote land use so as to be compatible with the adjacent uses of land. That's what the statutory standard is. In this case, as I think we can demonstrate, 235A is compatible, 1393 is not. Our ordinance, which is passed because that statute allows it, says that our PUD should have appropriate limitations to assure compatibility with adjoining and proximate properties. It tracks the statute. Our PUD, our PUD ordinance says we should encourage diversified living environments and land uses. Our ordinance says there should be guarantees and assurances about the maintenance of open space and recreational areas. It says that a PUD should provide amenities and services not ordinarily required in a conventional development. It's easy to see without looking too far that 1393 does not live up to the standards in our own ordinance, nor in the statute. We have a comprehensive plan in Oklahoma City. A comprehensive plan is not some document that is just created out of thin air. It is done by citizen participation. Since the 2000 OKC plan, we have developed a number of sector plans in this city, and you all know how they're done. They are done by participation with stakeholders in the area that they're intended to cover. And this is true, too, with a comprehensive plan in our city. It is not law, but it is a guideline, and it is a very important guideline, particularly for projects like this. There's no dispute but that this land is in the urban growth area. So we look to the plan to see what are the standards for developments of this kind in the urban growth area. And here's what we see at page 25 of the comp plan. The general direction in the plan is to promote high-quality multifamily residential developments. The plan favors residential developments, multifamily residential developments, so long as they are high-quality. Further, it says, which are compatible with adjoining land uses. So the same standard that we find in our own comprehensive plan tracks with our PUD ordinance, tracks with the statute. High-quality compatibility. Now, the plan also includes a number of actions at page 26. And what it says is, we have to have a density standard for multifamily residential developments in the urban growth area of eight dwelling units per acre. Now, I attached to my letter brief photocopies of that portion of the comprehensive plan that says that, so there wouldn't be any doubt. Not making it up. That's our plan. There are exceptions to that rule. The eight dwelling acre per unit rule in our comprehensive plan. The first is that you can have more than eight units an acre if that density is, I mean, you can have more if you offset a higher density with lower-density construction in other parts of a unified project. That's not applicable here because this is not really a unified project. It's not a mixed-use development. There are no other portions. There's only one portion. The second exception is bypass parcels. The second exception is bypass parcels. Now, the applicant could say, well, this is a bypass parcel. Perhaps it is. But what the plan says is that you can have somewhat higher densities in a bypass parcel. That's the language, somewhat. In excess of eight. Well, how much is somewhat? Well, maybe it's 10, maybe it's 12, maybe it's the 14 that we find in PUD 235A. But it certainly is not 27, which is what we would have with 1393. The third exception is that you can have higher density in a multifamily residential development in an urban growth area if it is along a major activity corridor. I don't see 164th as a major activity corridor. Or finally, you can have higher densities as part of a major mixed-use development project. This is not such a project. So there are no exceptions into which this project falls. Therefore, the eight dwelling units per acre should apply unless there was something that would justify a higher density. And I know you're thinking, well, Mr. Coon just told us that his density will be 9.95. No, it won't. No, it won't. And we'll talk a little bit in just a minute about what the real density of this project is, and I think it'll be pretty obvious. I think we'll talk about it now. This, by the way... And I regret having stepped away from the mic, but this is Mr. Coon's latest site plan. He distributed it last week to members of the council, not today, but to members of the council, members of the council again. So it's not entirely clear. One story review story, this I believe is, one story letter. And I attached photocopies to my letter brief, exhibit B. This is what's below. And this area where it's meant to be built is nine acres, nine acres, something acres. Under the carrot FEMA flood plan map, only 7.1 acres can be built on. I have a board that'll demonstrate that as well. So if the applicant didn't go through all of the processes he needs to go through with the city in FEMA, he's got 7.1 acres. If he goes through those processes and he succeeds, then he's got 9 point something acres. This is based on the assumption that he can get a letter of map revision from FEMA, change the flood zone around, and build on nine acres. So everything that we tell you today is going to be based on nine acres. Not because we know that he can get it done, but because that's what he says he's going This is Hunter Miller. Here's the whole area, and here's Lisbon area, 9.1 acres, or whatever the town actually built on. This is 24. Or is it? We know that actually, right now, at FEMA map, we've got 7.1. And let's assume that he's successful getting a letter of map revision, so we have nine acres. This is where he probably will be building. The rest of this, one building, basically marshalling. Can't build on it, doesn't intend to build on it. How do you calculate the density of this project? Let's see what the law says. Let's just see what the law says. I believe I attached to my letter...I quoted in my letter brief what our ordinance says. And I believe I attached a copy of the ordinance. It says this. Gross density shall be calculated by dividing the total land area to be developed for residential The total land area to be developed for residential units. The total land area to be developed for residential units. That's what this is. It's not this. Now, what Mr. Coon says is, well, we've always done it that way. We've always taken all the land owned by the developer and used that as the figure. I don't know that to be true. I remember what Commissioner Gales said at the Planning Commission hearing. For those of you who watched the tape, and he said, well, the only reason we got into that was because of cluster housing. Now, he has a pretty good institutional memory, it's better than mine. But whatever the reason, I read the law as it's written, and the law is pretty clear. You can't...and even if it were not... How much space would it take to base density on this whole thing? It defies common sense. This is the only land that's going to be developed. And that's consistent with what the ordinance says. There are not going to be any residential units up here. They're getting it. So we've got nine acres. Here's the units that Mr. Coon wants, 240. What's the capacity? How many units on each of those nine acres? So close to it. There. That's 1393. We've got nine acres. We'll leave this blank, and we know that 13...or 235A says this is how much you can add. So down to that, I attached my letter brief, that's what it says. You solve this out, how many units can you get at 14.52 and nine acres? Mr. Coon wants you to believe that this figure should be 350. Well, how do you get there? The only way you can get there is to take all of this land that can't be developed, that can't be developed, and use it. You calculate that figure. Can't be done.
Eric, I was waiting for you to write floor to floor to floor down there.
I'm trying to be professorial about this thing. All right, so, we did some experiments. We hired our own engineer. And we sent the engineer, let's figure out how many units we can get in 235A with density of 14.52. And I'll hold this closer to you later. This was done by the engineer, the lesson, who lives today. Oh, we had two restrictions. One, the density had to be 14.52, and we had to have eight plexes and four plexes, and that's in the flooding park. So we landed on, here's what it looks like. All four plexes are in the front of track B1, which is what the flooding park, all eight plexes are in the back. There. If you put them in there like that, you know you've got nine acres of land, and you've put in 132 units, you've got the 14.66 units of land, a little more than what the DUC told us. And you can see that if you do it as originally planned, you've got room for the common amenities that the PUD ordinance calls for. You can also see that these structures under 235A are far more compatible with the neighborhood over here and the neighborhood over here than what the applicant has in mind. Oh, we tried a different size unit. The size of these units under the land was the smallest size that the applicant had in mind, which was about 622 square feet. We went and see how many of those were to do. So then, we did it at a larger size, 122, and comes out back to center, 132. Once again, you can have big units with eight plexes in the back, and four plexes in the front, for your small units, and still stay within the density limits of that type. Now, someone might say, well, Mr. Groves, you're promoting a PUD at 14.52, that's higher than the eight in the plan. Well, yes, it is, because the plan wasn't done when this PUD was adopted in 1986. Our standards have changed. But we can live with 14.52. We like it a lot better than 27, which is what the applicant is proposing. Now, the number of units. Some members of the council have expressed interest in the number of units. It's very simple. You know you've got nine acres, you know what the density limit is in 235A, you know that you can only do eight plexes and four plexes. You do it the way we just did it, you're going to max out at about 132. If you do any more, density goes up. The applicant wants 240 units, and there was a question or two from members of the council about why are you stuck on 240 units? And it is the economics of it, of course it is. It takes 240 units to make this work economically for the applicant. But why is that? It has to do with the purchase price, of course, because purchase price always drives density. You bring down the purchase price, you don't need that many units. But that's not my business, and actually, isn't yours either. I'd like you, if you would, please, to direct your attention to the comparison sheet that we gave you, which counters the comparison sheet that Mr. Coon gave you. The first category was R4 development regulations. I believe he says it's the same in each one. Well, not exactly. The reason is that in PUD 235A, the development regulations are added to by a limitation on density of 14.52 units per acre in track B. The actual density, if you calculate it the way the ordinance says, it's 14.52 in PUD 235A, and it's 27 in 1393. It is not 9.95. The only way you can get 9.95 is to create this imaginary kingdom of land that's never going to be used. Type of units in 235A, four plexes and eight plexes, 1393, no limitation. Architectural standards. Mr. Coon argues that 1393 has architectural standards, and this somehow makes it better than 235A. I don't think so. The only architectural standard he's got is, I'll do 60% masonry or brick exterior building materials. The architectural standards in 235A are, first, a limit on the type of units, the promise that it will be of compatible residential character, limited to stories 35 feet and building separation. Those are architectural standards. As to this exterior building material...oh, and by the way, my clients would trade lower density for building materials any old day. So we're not that impressed with a promise that, well, we'll do 60% brick or masonry. And one other thing about that, you know, the planning staff all the way along said, we want 70% brick or masonry. And the applicant, Hunter Miller, was stuck on 50%, and he wouldn't budge until the Planning Commission put the heat on him and said, you've got to do something. So he split the difference, and said, well, I'll do 60%. Now, that's a signal of something about this project that we'll get back to in a minute. So architectural standards, we would rather have lower density, thank you. Plating. Mr. Coon is arguing that the design statement for 235A says nothing about plating. It doesn't. It's silent. Now, what happens when a PUD design statement, particularly a vintage one like this one, is silent and doesn't say anything at all about a given subject? Current regulations control, of course. Is plating required these days? Yes, it is. Check Section 59-14150, subsection C. He has to platter. So suggesting that his design statement in 1393, that he'll platter it as some sort of improvement, is simply not accurate. Has to be platted, one way or the other. And by the way, in the handout that I gave you, I photocopied the ordinance that says that. It's attached. The PUD design statement on 235A is silent. It doesn't say anything about dumpsters, because back in 1986, we didn't think that much about dumpsters. And he says in 1393, well, we're going to screen our dumpsters. Well, you'd have to anyway, because it's required. And since 235A is silent, current regulations control. See, Section 59-12200.3, subsection F. Dumpsters are required. I attached that ordinance to the handout as well. Signage. Mr. Coon argues, well, we're going to have monument signs, no pole signs. Well, the PUD design statement for 235A is silent, so what obtains? Current signage regulations. You're not going to have any pole signs out there if 235A is built out. As to the buffer zone, there is a buffer zone in 235A, and there's a buffer zone in 1393. They differ in size. However, in the buffer zone for 1393, there's no assurance of site-proof screening and no preservation of existing vegetation. As far as lowering the buildings, we felt that three stories was out of scale in the neighborhood, and only within the last week, the 11th hour, as Mr. Coon prepared a site plan where he takes off the third story. And I think he did that under pressure from a member of this council. How much difference does it make? None, because it doesn't change the density, which is the offensive thing about the project. In the course of this case, my clients and I have been willing to negotiate a project that is compatible with this neighborhood from the outset. I have pleaded with Mr. Coon, and he is a friend of mine, incidentally, and nothing I say here today is intended to be taken against Mr. Coon personally. Mr. Miller, however, is not a friend of mine. We never see Hunter Miller. You know, we get to talk to Brian, and Brian calls Hunter on the phone. We've been willing to negotiate this thing from the beginning, to make it compatible. Everything we've ever suggested, we said, we'll bring our own engineer, we'll bring our own architect, we'll help you design it so that it fits in. You can do...you can still make money doing eight plexes and four plexes, we'll help you figure it out. Reject it out of hand. The only things he's given up, he gave up under pressure, I think, from Councilman Ryan, and later from...and earlier from the Planning Commission, wouldn't move. Now...
Eric, can you sum it up?
Yes, I'm getting there, Mayor, I promise, I'm really moving along. Bring that ball down court, just like Duke did last night. Zoning decisions affect the value of land. The law recognizes that. If 1393 is approved as it's designed, the property values in Lexington... If 1393 is approved as it's designed, the property values in Lexington and the other neighborhood are either going to go down or they're going to stagnate. There's no remedy in the law for this. There's nothing you can do about it legally. You can't go sue them, say, "You lowered my property value." The law recognizes it and accepts it as a consequence of zoning because zoning is a legislative decision. But this reality should not be ignored by this municipal legislature. There's going to be a winner and a loser here. Mr. Miller is going to get his project if this is approved, and the university is going to get a great deal of money. And I know how much money that is, and it was told to me in confidence, and I can't reveal it, but it is off the charts. And that's what's driving the density. What did the adjacent homeowners get? Not what they originally agreed to, not what they originally understood. 235A was approved, no protest. That's what they bought into. This will be of no benefit. So there's a right and wrong to these cases, and that's the situation here. Two other things. Why did the planning commission vote to approve this? Well, that was a failure of advocacy. That was my fault. I played a bad game. I didn't meet every point that Mr. Coon presented. I hate to say that, but it's true. If you play a bad ballgame, you might as well own up to it, and I did. It wasn't the planning commission's fault, wasn't my client's fault. I didn't give them the information they needed, but that's not the case today. Finally, in this city, we have invested tremendous resources in revitalization. Maps one, maps for kids, maps three. We have created overlay districts and design committees and set very high standards, especially downtown, along the river, some other areas. We should apply those same standards to the suburbs. There's no reason why we shouldn't. We should refuse to move backwards with a design like this. You know, this is the kind of design I used to see in the 1970s when I was on this council. And I regret to say that I voted for a lot of them, and they're tenements now. I'm sorry I did that. It took me a while to learn. And that's what this will be. Ten years from now, we will recriminate about why did we ever let that go through, if we do. Finally, in order to approve this PUD, we must disregard the standards in our own PUD ordinance, turn our backs on the comprehensive plan and its density limits, discard the present zoning, which is adequate and fair to all and from which the developer can make a fair profit if he doesn't pay too much for the land. I know you don't like to hear repetitive and cumulative presentations, so we are limiting the number of people who will speak for the neighborhood, but there are two. They won't be as windy as I was. But I'd like you to hear from Randy Lewis, who's president of the association, and from Judy Cawthorn briefly.
We are going to hear from the two people that have signed up, and Eric had their names correct. Pat, why don't we go through these two names, and then I'd like to give Brian a word to kind of wrap it up, and then I'll expect a motion from you one way or the other. Is that...
I have a question I'd like to ask as well. We'll see if they're answering.
Okay, sounds good. Randy Lewis?
Do you have a question to me, Councilman?
Somebody said they had a question?
Not yet.
Not yet, Eric.
Randy Lewis? Randy, we will need your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. My name is Randy Lewis. I live at 16613 Sunny Hollow in the Lexington addition. I abut the creek there on the east side, so this development will directly affect my property. I'll try to be brief and summarize and not duplicate what's already been said, but I'd like to give you a little bit of history about the Lexington neighborhood, just a little bit, and the neighborhood additions that are around there. We're relatively small additions. For example, the Lexington addition is only 80 homes in that addition, and it was developed back in the '70s by Mr. Menifee, as already been stated. Late '70s, early '80s is when most of the homes were built. The area that was developed was about 40 acres, about four times the developmental acres that's being discussed today of nine acres and a lot less density of 80 homes on that acreage. The homes are around 2,500 square feet to 4,000 square feet. So you put that in reference, it's about a half-acre lots approximately. My particular home was one of the later homes in the addition, and it was actually developed and built in the 1991s. The character and style of these homes are typical three-to-four-bedroom homes with the same number of baths, study, den, separate formal dining areas and that sort of thing. I think you get the picture of the type of style of house we're talking about. They're not... Every house is unique, is not the same as being proposed in the applicant's design. They have a different style, different brick structure. Every house is different and has its own unique style and character. We've already talked about the units of density. In comparison, our neighborhood is three times... I mean, the proposal, 1393, is three times the density of our existing neighborhood. This really concerns us, and it's for these reasons we think you ought to vote no and deny this request, because density is not our friend in this particular project that's being proposed today. This has been a long process. You've heard about it being a year and a half. The homeowners and residents have fought a hard battle, and we have a lot invested in this. More so that you might even say that we have more invested in this than the developers or the applicant or even the seller, since the land, the property was donated to them. Through that process, we've had to engage in professional expertise to voice our concerns and to make sure that we were heard. You've heard about a flood study. Skip Kelly, you brought that up. That is a major concern of ours. We've been told to trust the process, but I'm not so sure because we live there on a daily basis. We know what really goes on, and that really concerns us. We've also had to engage in our own engineer to do our own site plans. These are processes that take a lot of time and a lot of expenses, and the homeowners have chosen to do this because it's important to us. And for these reasons, we also think you ought to deny the request. In closing, we are worried about the stagnant and decreased property values, as Eric has mentioned to you. Recently, there's a number of homes up for sale in the area. There's four on my block that back up to this, mainly because they're concerned of what's going to be developed here. I do want to stress to you, though, that we're not against apartments like has been suggested. We realize it's an R4 zoning, but 235A is more compatible with what we have as opposed to 1393 that's being proposed today. As has been summarized today, I'll close with this. 235A does provide less density. I believe we showed you that with 132 units. As opposed to 1393, there would be 240 units. Many of you all today asked some good questions. These have been our questions all along. I'm not so sure that our questions have been answered or satisfied, and it's for this reason we would ask you not to support this project and allow 235 to govern that. So with that, I'll close.
All right, Randy, thank you. Judy?
Question of Randy, Mayor?
Okay.
Randy, I apologize we haven't connected...
Yes.
...to be asking you the last hour and hadn't mentioned this to the applicant either. But as I drive the area and try to get familiar with the concerns of the neighbors, I guess for me is how this whole project, density, generally density, yes, but more specifically, how this project fronts 164th Street. If there were any reduction in the intensity of the units on 164th Street, something less than the apartment's design, four plex, eight plex, frontage, would that make any difference?
We would be concerned with the compatibility of the existing R1 areas because we feel like, if you will, the R4, I mean, the four plexes and eight plexes are more compatible with our area, and that would protect us as homeowners and our values. Does that answer your question?
So you're not saying yes, and this may not even be a consideration for the applicant, but you're saying a lesser intensity on the frontage would certainly be more desirable?
Not so much of an institutionalized, you know, type dormitory construction that's being proposed in all the applicant's designs. We are also, if I may, have one more comment, Mayor. Erosion exists today, and I think Skip brought out some good questions, and we actually foresee erosion continuing and in many instances, probably getting worse. So we are concerned about the flooding aspects of this.
All right, Judy?
Mayor, I ask Randy just one question.
I'm sorry, we are not going to let Randy leave.
Okay, thank you.
You're the president of the association?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Has there been any sit-down conversations between the association, the president and your membership, the residents, and the applicant in reference to these two plans? I mean, has there ever been any discussions to try to compromise the concerns that the residents have and the desires of the applicant?
Yes, sir. Early on in the process, we met with Pat Ryan in his office. The actual applicant, Hunter Miller, was supposed to be there but declined to be there, but did have Mr. Coon in presence. And when we got down to the density aspects of it, he just wasn't willing to come off of the density and then at that point was adamant about three stories. So the discussions broke down very quickly, and we would welcome the opportunity to sit back down at the table, but that offer has not been out there.
Thank you.
Randy, thank you.
Thank you.
Judy, we will need your name and address for the record.
I'm Judy Cawthorn. I live at 16609 Sunny Hollow Road, Lexington. And thank you all for your patience, Mr. Mayor and Councilman and City Manager. I know this has been long, but it's been long for us as well, and I thank you. In 1990, my husband and I bought the home that we planned to retire in. And over that 20 years, we have watched our neighborhood's children go from childhood to adulthood. I want to give you a little bit of the feel of our neighborhood because we're people who, when we've had losses, they've been there to support each other, they've been there to help each other. We take good care of our property. We work together as an association to beautify our neighborhood. We even work on the land that doesn't belong to us, just so the neighborhood will look good. And we're a strong community, and I'm proud of that neighborhood. And so I'm here to talk to you from the standpoint of a property owner in that neighborhood and represent the other property owners in that neighborhood because, for most of us, we have a major lifetime investment in this property, and we don't want to see its value eroded by a project which, because of the density that we've talked to you about, is going to lessen the value of our property. So I speak for the residents of Lexington and the residents of the valley, who are also affected by this. We believe that 235A is less damaging to the value of our property. You've heard a lot about the buffer, and you've heard a lot about the 20 to 30 feet and the tree protection and so forth. The only thing I want to ask you, I don't want to belabor that because you've heard so much about it, but I do want to ask you, as you look at the site plan for 1393A and you hear Mr. Coon say where they have to take out trees to put in the riprap, they will replace trees, please consider where on earth they will put those trees. According to the plan I looked at, buildings or parking go directly to the line, to the flood line that is shown on the floodplain study. And I don't know where those trees can go, so I don't have any faith that that's going to really happen. We're concerned not just about Councilman Bowman, 164th Street, we're concerned about what we immediately have to live with within the 150 feet that were expressed by Mr. Coon. So I'm going to... You'll be grateful for this. I'm passing over all my buffering information, but I do want to say that we do. And in answer to, I think it was Councilman Kelly asked if we ever met, we actually had a very large neighborhood meeting early in this process. We had to move to a church hall. And it was at that meeting that our attorney, Mr. Groves, said to us, explained to us what the current zoning was and what would be the alternative to this plan. So yes, we did know, and yes, there was much discussion about it at even a larger number than just those of us who met with Councilman Ryan. So we believe that 235A actually is less damaging to our value of our property, not only because we see in 235A much better protection as far as buffering is concerned, but we also look at the flooding issue. The history of Chisholm Creek flooding has been documented by video and by photographs that we have provided to the city. And I will tell you that if you have had an opportunity to see those, you will be looking at land that Mr. Coon's plan shows buildings and parking lots on because he's going to fill in that area. Today, if it rained heavily, that area would be a virtual lake. That's what flooding we're talking about. Now, I'm not talking about a study. I'm not talking about a map with lines on it or speculation. I'm talking about what I see outside my back door when we have heavy rains. And I see a flow of creek that takes out trees. I see water that forms a lake on the land across from me. And I know that that will continue even if this project doesn't go through. But I am asking, why? Why would we take the chance of making this worse? Mr. Coon talked about if 235A stays, whoever builds it will have to do the riprap. I don't believe that either because I didn't hear anything about that until his new flood study and until the plan that he showed accompanying that new flood study showed fill. And it was when that fill came into the picture that I began to hear about the 5.1 flow and the 3.1 bank and the riprap to control erosion. So I question whether that really would happen if the fill didn't happen, if it wasn't so important to build this dense of a project. So regardless of the numbers of Mr. Coon's flood study that in theory make this project of this density feasible, the fill that his floodplain diagram shows is required to build this project within those flood lanes, lines, will change that creek flow, and it will create, or the density of that many more buildings and that much more concrete to park those cars will affect this flooding problem.
All right, Judy, can you wrap it up?
I will wrap it up right now. I just want to say, you all, many of you, have allowed me to visit with you about this prior to this meeting and have listened to me and heard me out, and I really do appreciate that. I do, I forgot to say, I have a great deal of confidence in this city council. I feel, I know that you care about this city deeply, and I know you care about its citizens, and I really ask for your help. And Councilman Ryan, our Ward Eight Planning Commissioner voted no to this twice, and he knew this was not a good project, and he turned it down. You represent us on this council. You're our champion. I plead with you to stand with us and not move for this application to be accepted.
All right, Judy, thank you. All right, Pat, do you want to have any questions you wanted to ask?
Just a couple of questions. First of all, in the emails I received, they were numerous. One of the issues that kept coming up was the idea of a site-proof fence that was provided for in 235A that wasn't in 1393. My question is a yes or no kind of question, Eric.
Thank God, these are yes and no type of questions.
Hopefully, does the requirement for a site-proof fence in 235A specify the location at which that fence can be built?
I'm sorry, Councilman, I couldn't quite...
In 235A, there's a requirement for a site-proof fence.
Yes.
Does it specify the location where that site-proof fence...
I think it might.
I think it might. Yeah, it says, that's right. I think it...
It says now what now?
On the eastern boundary.
Okay, thank you, that's fine.
I believe.
Okay, so it does specify a location, that's what I ask. The second question, I think, is for the staff, and that is two things. The density calculation, that's been a big issue. And my question is, Mr. Groves commented that we were violating the law by using the system we have in place now. And as I understand it, the approach that Brian suggested is one that has been used for a number of years in determining dwelling densities. I guess, is it in violation of law what we've been doing?
No, sir. I'm talking to Mr. Teener. This has consistently been our interpretation of how you calculate density, and it is, as Mr. Groves said, it is the gross density of the total land area to be developed for residential purposes. In this case, it's 24 acres, there aren't any other uses to be developed there. We have always calculated the total area as the gross area to be developed.
Okay, so what the applicant's done is consistent with our definition, with our interpretation of the definition of how you calculate density?
Right.
Okay, another question before you go away, Dan. Mr. Groves made a comment that 1393 didn't have the amenities that the PUD ordinance required. Is there a requirement in our PUD ordinance for a certain level of amenities in an apartment complex?
Not specifically, no, sir.
Thank you. And the third question is, flooding has been a big issue, and I'm not sure who can answer this one, but the question in my mind, will the construction of any apartment complex on this site, 235A or 1393, exacerbate the flooding situation as much as the downstream development's been doing?
It's my understanding from Public Works is that they're required to meet our drainage ordinance, and Adir's initial review indicates that it will not.
Okay.
You may want to get Dennis in here to speak to that.
Your honor, that's the other question I have.
Okay.
Some of my colleagues have questions.
Yes, Skip?
Yes, I'd like to have a follow-up. You know, because there's been several mentions of Mr. Adir, and I think sometimes when we have situations as contested as this is, that if those individuals are the individuals that's providing the expertise, information to both sides, I really would appreciate it if they would be here in order to respond, because I don't like the fact that somebody uses somebody's name and says something, and we never get to see that person to say if this is what you really said. And I know this is not a trial, but to some degree, when you're talking about something this serious in reference to people's lifetime earnings, and the issue of flooding and the erosion that I know personally exists in many parts of this city from developed areas, and citizens call, and we tell them, that's your problem because the developer developed it, and now it's on you. But if we got people telling these individuals that this is no problem, that whatever, you know, restrictions or whatever requirements that they meet, that it satisfies the city's flooding issue and the washaway of water, I would just like to know if that is in fact what Mr. Agarwal has stated. And if the erosion issue is a major concern here, I think that should have been probably one of the first things that we started talking about.
Unfortunately, I didn't hear the first part of your question. I assume you're talking about, did we do enough, have we done enough to, in Public Works, to assure ourselves that the developer is abiding by our drainage ordinance?
Well, yes, Dennis, but Mr. Coon stated that the developer would be totally responsible for any erosion problems that continued or was exacerbated as a result of any development in this area, that this is part of this application. Is that...
I heard him say that, and I'm not going to speak for him, but I don't think he meant to say that in the future. They would be responsible for addressing what needs to be done according to our drainage ordinance when they develop, but once the property is developed, that developer would no longer be responsible.
Well, who would be responsible?
Is that what you meant to say?
I hope this is on record, because I want that on record, because as with my name on the bottom of that drawing, I've always felt like we were responsible forever for anything that we had caused. And that, I feel that's my responsibility as a professional engineer, to make sure I protect that creek bank so that there's not future problems, and if there is that I've created, we're going to have to fix them. That's just always been my professional opinion of it. I didn't real, if we can go back later and say, city, this is now yours, I've never been able, I've never thought about doing that. And not that I'm saying I will, I've just always assumed that was my responsibility to take care of anything that we may have created. Now, upstream, if something, another big cross springs mall goes in at 150th and creates a whole lot more drainage, then I'm going to be looking to them as, what did you create for me to have to take care of? If it's something I caused, I'm going to be taking care of it. My name's on that drawing forever.
Skip, I think where you're headed with your question, if this was a housing development, eventually every single lot would be a different owner along that creek, and you'd be dealing with who owned the creek to deal with it in the future. In this particular case, you've got a single owner of the entire piece of property, the apartment complex, is the owner of the creek. And I think that's what Brian was trying to allude to, is that the owner is going to be responsible theoretically for the creek that's on their property line, that's on their side of the property line from here on out. So when you talk about residential developments that have problems along creek, you're talking about individual owners of every lot down along that creek. Okay. Dan, did you want to add something?
As to the liability issue, Brian's right. If he causes erosion, he will be liable for that. If the owner of this property in the future causes additional erosion down the line, they will be responsible for it, but not because they're doing the, putting in the protection that we are requiring them to do by ordinance now. They have to meet our current ordinances. If later on, for some reason, the way they do it or the way the property owner handles the property, it causes future damage, they will be responsible for it, like anybody else's negligence.
All right. Brian, did you want to say anything before we move forward?
One minute.
Okay.
Couple things. I love arguing with Mr. Groves, I learn a whole lot when I do that. One of the things, you know, I've been before you all, not personally, but before this horseshoe for 25-plus years. I don't create my own imaginary kingdom. I have rules that I have to follow, and I love rules. My dad used to do this, he followed the rules. I have a, there's a staff that is here that says, here's the rules you will follow. So I do that, and it keeps me out of trouble when I have to follow rules. One of the things that Mr. Groves did say is that the current PUD, 235, will create these amenities and all that. I cannot find, and there is not, in PUD 235, any kind of a site plan that shows any amenities at all. I refer to the staff report, and then I'll sit down and shut up. In the staff report, it says, the new PUD is proposing architectural standards and a specific site plan review process that would allow additional review that is not required with the existing PUD zoning. Not my words, it's your staff. One other comment is, staff recommended conditional approval based on four TEs, which we've agreed to three of them, out of the amount, 60%, not 70. Conditional approval subject to the following technical evaluations if planning commission determines that the proposed decrease in density. It came from them, not from me. I'm using that same apples. With that, if PUD 235 happens to be developed someday, it will not be done by me. I spend two hours every two weeks with your staff across the street in the appearance standards to improve what City of Oklahoma City looks like. That's my time that I go over there and spend to help the city look better. I will not be part of, if someone comes in and does 235, I won't be part of it. You know that I'm not going to lie to you, you know that I'm not going to make something up to slip one through. In my opinion, no facts to it, in my opinion, what you get with 1393 is better than 235 because you're going to see brick, and you're going to see some site plans. That's just my opinion, and I'll shut up.
All right, Pat? You ready to make a motion and move forward? Sam, did you have a question?
I ask Legal one question, Mayor.
Sure you can.
So much of the discussion had to do with density. And I just, I want to go back to the original part approved, 235A, was the, were the 350 units at that time appropriate density?
That's Bob, that question.
Well, the PUD was approved by the council, so that would indicate that the council at that time felt it was an appropriate density for development of that property. And they were consistent with the way we calculated it, the way we calculated that.
So that's been part of the consistent practice that you talked about earlier that we've been following. My expressions to Mr. Ryan since this began was, if we're within, if we're within the density, and I'm comfortable at this point, we are, it's the visual impact. And the three-story and the frontage on 164th were my concerns that I can convey to him.
Okay. Pat?
The three stories on 164th, there are no three-story buildings being proposed out here, so that's off the table. I received enormous number of emails on this project. I read them all, there was a consistent theme in them that was essentially, we don't want apartment. There was, the crime issue was raised, the traffic issue was raised, the impact on the school issue was raised. And I know that Judy and Randy have testified and have told me time and time again that they're not opposed to apartments, but some of their neighbors are. And now, this is clearly not an apartment versus something else kind of project. This is two apartment proposals side by side. And I've known Randy for a long, long time, and I know Judy, and I have an enormous amount of respect for her passion and the work she put into this. It was really extensive. And one email I got, it came in either last night or this morning, at the last paragraph, the lady who wrote said, "Our interest is in doing what is best for our family and our community." And I, nobody on this council has any other interest in mind. What we do this morning is in the interest of the community. We have examples in Ward Eight of projects that were built to minimum standards that have impacted property values, have impacted feeling about people towards certain areas, and I would not like to have that happen again. I've drove by a lot of apartment complexes in the last couple of weeks, all over Oklahoma City, primarily northwest of Ward Eight. I've seen three-story units, two-story units adjacent to residential areas that have been there for over 20 years. The apartments are functioning fine. I've received very little complaints since I've been on city council about residents who live adjacent to apartment complexes. Driving by, I couldn't tell you within the nearest 100 what the density of those units were. And to some extent, an apartment complex, whether it was 132 units or 240 units, would have the same impact on the community. Somebody driving by a year from now could not tell you what the density was. So I'm not sure that's an important issue. My concern was to get the best possible project on that piece of property. And to some extent, we were looking at the known evil versus the unknown evil. I wasn't 100% pleased with either project, but I think that going forward with 1393 will be the best results for our community as a whole, and the impact on the neighborhood will be no different essentially than if we built 132 units in there. Therefore, I would move at this point in time to approve the application for 1393.
We have a second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Because of the level of protest, it will require seven of the nine votes to pass.
May I have the easement been submitted?
Question about the easement being submitted?
The applicant indicated he'd have the easement at the meeting.
Okay, it's been submitted. Ready to vote? All right, cast your votes. Motion fails. Is there any other motions on this item before we move forward? All right.
Mr. Mayor, the next item is not your general obligation bond matter, but it is the item that follows the next item. And we have a bidder who's very interested in learning if his bid has been accepted on the $29 million of general obligation bonds. Might we take that item next, sir?
Yes. We're going to move on to item 8E, the advice of council. Come back to D.
Good morning. Item 8E1 is the award of purchase of $29 million in general obligation limited tax bonds that were approved in 2007. This is the second sale, and today we are recommending that the award be made to Morgan Keegan and Company for a true interest cost of 4.848827. The sale, the bids were received at 9:00 this morning. I'll refer you to the second page behind the award memo where we received six bids. Morgan Keegan is the best at 4.84. JP Morgan is the next at 4.91, so you can see that the spread is very, very small.
So the issue before us is whether or not to accept the bid from Morgan Keegan and Company at 4.84?
It's to award the purchase of $29 million in general obligation limited tax bonds to Morgan Keegan and Company.
Any question for Laura, any other member of the staff?
Just a very quick question. Laura, how does that compare to the interest rate that we received on the previous issue?
The previous sale was in 2008, and the true interest cost was 5.4, so it's a very favorable comparison.
I'd move approval.
Any other comments or questions? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
The next item is the ordinance that provides for the issuance of these bonds, general obligation limited tax bonds, in the amount of $29 million.
All right. Questions on item 8D2? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
This item does require an emergency.
Need a motion on the emergency? Cast your votes, the emergency passes.
Before we leave today, I would like to recognize some of our partners in this sale. John Williams and Gary Bush provide bond counsel for us, and also PFM. This is the last sale in the 2000 authorization and 2007 combination for PFM's contract, and I especially want to commend them for their assistance to us in providing financial advisory services. They've taken us through a tough market and a long period of developing our financial reporting and our financial information presentation to our rating agencies, and helped us acquire a AAA rating. All of these parties have helped us in our sales, helped us market our bonds better, helped us present our financial information better, and are why we're able to bring such a great interest rate to this sale.
Laura, thank you. Noted. All right, now we'll go back and pick up item 8D. These are some fee adjustments. Any comments or questions on this item? Sam, you were talking about this last week. Ready to go on this?
Well, just a little adjustment, if we might, or consideration for an adjustment, Mayor. I had expressed concern last week with regards to the swimming pool fees, admission fees raising across the board this summer, another dollar. If we're going to do that, I would ask that the council give consideration to softening that a bit by perhaps a two-tier admission fee policy. Many, many entertainment venues like the zoo and other pools will use a 12 and over adult fee and then under 12, a lesser fee. And I'd just like to suggest that consideration for the council that as we move forward on the new fees, including swim pool fees, that we'd consider a two-tier admission fee on the aquatic swimming pools.
Is your goal for it to be revenue neutral?
No.
Your goal is to reduce the revenue coming to the Parks Department?
No.
What is your...
It's not, it's not revenue intended. It's to... It's to, it's, it has to do with this, you know, this time and our economic climate to just for revenue purposes only, to boost the swimming pools when we know that in some instances, we're going to be closing other pools. We take that in light and at least soften it by distinguishing an admission fee for 12 and over and a $4, $6 for.
By reducing the revenue, aren't we helping to assure that other pools close?
We already know, no, I don't think that's going to make any difference on this matter. Wendell's certainly, on this kind of cost.
I don't think Wendell wants to take these questions. Why is he sitting at the back?
I'll take the question then. If we go, most of the, over half would be, you know, if you said to go with four and six, like was, you suggested in your email, I think Wendell calculated there would actually be a net loss to the Parks revenue on this particular fee, because most of the, most that pay the fee fall under the, under that age restriction 12, correct?
Yes, sir. Of course, we don't ask the age of the individuals to come in those two pools, as the age is not a bearing on the price at this time. But our very conservative estimates are that at least half of those who attend Early Wine and Will Rogers, perhaps much more, but I'm going to be conservative in stating that at least half of those who attend those two pools are under 12. So if the fee for those folks were reduced, again, I haven't done calculations, but it appears to me that there might be a reduction in revenues.
Mayor, I just, you know, I guess the whole justice, I feel just a whole lot better if this were being driven with the idea some increased revenues could help us keep another pool open. And unfortunately, it's, it's just, it's not going to accomplish that. That was the reason for it.
I understand, and I think we're all sympathetic to the cost of a kid getting admission to a pool. But at the same time, we are talking about revenue to the Parks Department, that we're going to have to figure out, you know, what else to close, what else to cut. And that's, that's just the realistic bottom line of it. So I mean, there's no good answer here. And I guess I like Wendell's answer better than I like your suggestion that we need to change it.
Not belaboring, I just.
Okay. Well, do you want to make a motion? You want to vote on it?
Move the item.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and that is to adjust the pool to that two-tiered system of a $6 and a $4 with 12-year-olds. That's not the motion?
I'll make that just to see how it flies.
That has to be an amendment.
I thought that's what he was trying to do. I'm not trying to put words in your mouth. What do you?
Can I just make it separately? As a separate motion?
Okay.
That we have a two-tier admission fee for our aquatic pools this year. $6 for 12 and over, $4 for under 12.
Okay. Cast your votes on that amendment.
I don't know.
The amendment fails, four to five. Okay.
Move the item.
All right, cast your votes on the item, and it passed unanimously. All right, we're on to item 8F. This is a public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed under 8F, dilapidated structures?
Move the items.
All right, cast your votes on 8F. Passed unanimously. Item 8G is a public hearing regarding unsecured structures. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed under 8G? All right, how about a motion? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. We're on to item 8H. These are revocable right-of-way permits. The first is from the Capitol Chamber of Commerce to hold the 2010 Africa West Parade on Martin Luther King from I-44 to Spring Lake Drive. This is in Ward 7. Skip, you want to make a motion on this one?
Move.
All right, we have a motion and a second. We're voting on item 8H1. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8H2 is the Oklahoma City Orchestra League to hold the 2010 Symphony Show House. We have one person who has signed up and asked to speak on this item. Anna McMillan?
Thank you for taking the time. I'm representing the Orchestra League, and I want to explain, first of all, the Symphony Show House is our fundraiser, the biggest one that we have to raise money to support the symphony and our music education in 65 schools in the Oklahoma City metro area. Our Symphony Show House for 2010 is the 37th Annual Show House, and it will open April 22nd and through April 30th, be open for private tours and luncheons and evening parties. And then May 1st through May 16th will be open to the public. And we overall, through the past years, average almost 15,000 people through our show house. We need to block some of the parking access on East Overholser Drive, and we're requesting a revocable right-of-way use permit to temporarily prohibit parking on the east side of East Overholser Drive from 23rd Street up to 2550. And on the north side, from 30th to 2550 on the west side, so that traffic will be able to get all the way through. And we won't have a crisis like we did at our preview party, where people parked on both sides of the street, traffic could not get through, and the homeowners had to call 911 to get people to come and move their cars. So we drastically need this permit.
Okay. Well, we appreciate your attention to that detail.
Thank you.
We don't need the traffic type in Ward 1, do we, Councilman Morris?
Your Honor, they'll probably have, never have a crowd like they did at the preview party again. So I think they're doing this out of abundance of caution, and I commend them for trying to look ahead to avoid a problem before it becomes a real issue.
Gary, you want to make a motion on this? It's in Ward 1.
Second.
All right, cast your votes. We're voting on item 8H2. Passed unanimously. Thank you. Item 8I is an amendment to the Oklahoma City plan.
Russell Claus is here to just cover a few of the points of what the amendment includes.
All right.
This will be a very brief presentation. This is an amendment that was passed by the Planning Commission on March 25th. Basically, what this does is recognize that we are aiming for a particular level of service for traffic on the city's roadways. It is important for a number of different reasons, primarily because it enables us to be able to plan ahead for how transportation will function in the city. This enables us, particularly with the CIP and the GEO bond, to be able to determine where we should be prioritizing our street improvements. This is something that we did not have before, was basically all done on a wish list and sort of a collective intuition about where those improvements should be made. This enables us to be proactive on this perspective. Also enables us to, to look at traffic impact studies, which we are requiring for any of the major large developments. It gives us a standard by which to be able to evaluate those, those particular applications. I do want to emphasize that this level of service that we're talking about today is focused solely on the roadway segments. It does not take account of intersection performance. That is a function of traffic management. So this is really about the capacity of the road as a whole to be able to move traffic. And it is calculated, very simple calculation, is the volume of the traffic by the capacity of the road. And that then determines six different levels of service. We go from A to F. I'm going to go through these very quickly, but level of A, level A, if you're familiar with this, is basically a very clear road. There are no impediments to the movement of traffic. Level B, you have a slightly, slightly increased level, but again, it's very free movement. There's no imposition on your ability to be able to use a roadway. Level B is what we are proposing for the rural areas of the city, and this is because we have different road standards out there. We, congestion in a rural area is unlikely. Level B is consistent with what people would expect in those areas. Level C is what we're proposing for the majority of the city. This is what we will be aiming for in all the urban growth area. So this is all the area where we currently have development, where, and development is proposed within the comprehensive plan urban growth area. Level D is what we are proposing for downtown, and that's a reflection of the fact that downtown is a more pedestrian-oriented environment. You do expect to see more congestion downtown. I think our level of service in downtown at this point in time is probably an A or a B. We are willing to accommodate an increased level of congestion in D, and we expect that that will happen as downtown continues to develop over time. Project 180 and all the other improvements that we are focusing on downtown are predicated on a level of service D. E and F are getting towards failure. Level of F is, level F is what you would expect to see on the Broadway Extension at 10:05 in the afternoon, or what you see in LA 24 hours a day. Not what we expect to ever accomplish here. Level of Service C, and this is a map that illustrates where those areas were, where we're targeting those areas of performance. Level of Service C is actually a higher standard than you, we see with most of our peer cities. Most of those are targeting a D, is the best that they can perform. So we enjoy the freedom of being able to move around here very easily in Oklahoma City, so our intention is to try and maintain that as we move forward. And with that, I'll answer any questions. Randy Entz is our transportation planner and has taken us through the process of approval, and he'll be answering the technical questions.
All right, any questions on the study? Yeah, Brian?
My first question is, is this a precursor or a primer to suggest impact fees in the future?
It is not a precursor. It's just a standard transportation planning function. Most of the cities have already done this. I mean, a level of service is certainly indicative in a discussion on impound fees, but this was not done for that purpose.
Okay. And then the second question I had is Southwestern at 10:05 in the afternoon. What would that rating be, do you know?
This is.
Like D, H, I, R, something like that?
The level of service is really about the capacity for the majority of the day. Now, peak hour, you're going to, there are going to be intersections that are going to deteriorate to an F at times. This is really about the capacity of the roadway. And you're talking about intersection issues, and it's really a traffic management.
So, so since we've just added this, we don't know what the roads are currently, correct? I mean, we would have to go out and look at that.
This was not, no, this was not an evaluation of, you know, the current capacity. I think the way that we have constructed our road infrastructure, over time, has been sort of headed in the same direction. Now, there will be variances in, in performance throughout the city, but this is now a target for us to be able to, to use for improvements in the GEO bond and CIP, as I mentioned.
Would it, would it be possible if, if the council was able to request a couple of streets and, so we can get a visual feel for what these might be? For instance, you know, everybody probably has certain areas of their wards that are concerns. Mine would be Southwestern and maybe like a, like the access road or something like that. Could we get that to you and maybe?
Sure.
Look at that? Okay. Thanks.
Your Honor, a lot of our arterial streets in Oklahoma City that carry a lot of traffic have a designation as either a state or a federal highway. Will these standards have any impact on how those roads are operated, designed?
These are for city streets, so this is, this is directed towards city arterials. If it is a state highway, then that is their responsibility.
So the Hefner Parkway or Speedway.
Hefner Parkway is a, yes.
Would not be.
That is correct. I mean, we can encourage them, but.
Well, to the extent that we could devise alternative routes, we might have an impact on the traffic.
Yes.
Okay. Ready to receive the plan?
Move the receipt.
All right, cast your votes.
Thank you.
Passed unanimously. Thank you for your work, Russell. All right, on item 8J, understand we do not need executive session.
That's correct.
If any individual council person has issues, I think we're good to go. All right, you have a second? Cast your votes on 8J. Do not need executive session. Understand we do not need executive session on 8K?
Correct.
Okay. Cast your votes. Passes. And item 8L, understand we do not need executive session.
Correct.
All right, how about a motion? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8M is claims recommended for denial. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed under 8M? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 9 is claims recommended for approval. How about a second? All right, cast your votes. Item 9 passed unanimously. Item 10 is items from council, and Councilman Bowman has an item dealing with the Paseo District. Sam?
Dan's here just to hit the high points. Mayor, I would like to say that what started out, as we looked at revising the outdoor sellers ordinance about six months ago, really had some rough edges to it and concerns. And in the process, in the last six months, I really have been encouraged with the work that's been done. We've taken into account other festivals in addition to Paseo, and I think we've had the representation that has checked off favorably on, on where we're going with this. The process has been extraordinarily good with a lot of participation, but Dan Brummett has just, over six months, has really been masterful in, in hearing and listening and putting forth through, again, a lot of effort with a lot of people, an ordinance that I just wouldn't have guessed we'd be here with today. And Dan's going to just hit us on the high points.
Well, thank you first for your comments, Councilman Bowman. Yes, this is an ordinance that we have been working on for about six months. We've gotten input from, I think, all the members of the council. We've had a lot of community input. We've had a lot of staff input. And this is an amendment to our outdoor sellers ordinance. And if you go back many years ago, the seller's ordinance was designed to accommodate a single vendor at a, on a commercial piece of property, what I refer to as the Velvet Elvis seller that's, he has his paintings or purses or whatever, and they set up on the corner in front of the Texaco Station, something like that. But it was designed to be a temporary use on a commercial piece of property for a very limited, in a very limited area. And as we looked at the ordinance, as it has been applied or has, has been used over the years, it has been used increasingly by a large number of outdoor sellers at a specific location at a limited time, and has created some potential safety hazards for the citizens. And this is what Councilman Bowman has charged us to look at as we considered amendments to the, to the ordinance. First of all, the ordinance provides a few new definitions of terms that are used in the ordinance. That's not really significant. The first main amendment is in Section 5970, where we limited the number of days per calendar year that an outdoor seller could, could operate on one location to 90 days. Once again, it was never the intention of the outdoor sellers ordinance that an outdoor seller could set up on a location for 365 days a year and essentially operate a business there without, without complying with the other business restrictions in the zoning ordinance. Nextly, we have exempted some institutions of educational, religious, and charitable institutions from the permit requirement. This was done because several council members had examples of festivals that they really didn't think should be required to have their outdoor sellers permit. The most, I think the one that was talked about most was the art festival that's down on the OCCC campus down in South Oklahoma City, when they have a large art festival down there. And so this, they would be able to conduct that art festival without their individual vendors being required to get outdoor sellers permits. The next thing we did is in chapter, in Section 3971, is we made the site plan that there, they have to submit a site plan that shows where they're going to set up on the lot, how they are in relation to other buildings or uses on the lot, and, you know, where, how they're going to, you know, what they're going to look like on the property. In the past, a lot of times, these have come in as just hand-sketched diagrams that really didn't provide any detail that code enforcement could use to go out and make sure that the outdoor seller was operating in the area that they said that they were permitted for. So we did increase the requirements and the specificity of the site plan. It now has to be drawn to scale. So once again, that's an enforcement thing, so that the enforcement officers can go out there and see where the use is and exactly where it's supposed to be in relation to the other uses on the property. In, in that same line, it was never the intent of the ordinance that the entire lot could be used for an outdoor seller. So what we've done in this ordinance is limited it to, that there has to be maintained at least 25%, and that's an aggregate of 25% of all of the, including all of the outdoor sellers on one piece of property. 25% of that lot has to remain open, basically, and not subject to any outdoor sellers business locations. Finally, we looked at some places where typically in the zoning ordinance and in our traffic ordinances, we do not let people operate, and we wanted to specify those in the ordinance. In the ordinance, it says in Section 3975 that outdoor sellers permit location cannot be located, obviously, on any portion of a public right of way. We don't want them putting their businesses right up on the curb line. Similarly, we don't want them. Similarly, we don't want them operating in the site triangle, in a required site triangle at a corner intersection, so that they're cut off the view of opposing traffic or intersecting traffic. They're maintained, they're to maintain the same site triangle as any other type of use. And finally, they're required to meet the same setbacks. In the zoning ordinance, in every classification, there are setbacks about how close you can be to the street and adjoining property lines. And this is a safety issue to make sure that there's plenty of access on the property for emergency vehicles and, you know, for safety crews to come on the property, and so it doesn't crowd the other uses in adjacent to the, at the outdoor seller. Finally, we're required that the outdoor seller put, display as permitted a site plan on the location, once again, so a code enforcement officer can go out there and look at that and see exactly where the outdoor seller is operating in conformance with their permit. And then finally, we did change the fee. The application fee for outdoor sellers was $30. We're raising it to $50, once again, to reaccoup the city's cost. We're still not really, really in the ballpark of recouping all our costs. We thought we'd at least increase it by $20, because there is a lot of staff time in researching these outdoor sellers and looking over all their applications and processing the permit. So, that's a $20 increase, and that to cover the city's costs. Now, that's- Any questions?
All right. Questions for Dan on this? Yeah, Mary?
Hey, Dan, quick question. Mobile food wagons that stay at a certain location every night or several nights a week, does this at all apply to them?
No. Food vendors are coming under a different ordinance. There's a specific ordinance for food vendors, and they're really regulated by the Health Department for the most part.
All right. Brian, then Gary.
This was brought to my attention yesterday, and so I have a very small fact base to go from, but I've been made aware that there's a problem. And I don't know if this is the ordinance that applies or exactly what the, where the sticking point is, but I would like to get this fixed, either with an amendment later on or something today. But there are some businesses that will extend their business operations into their parking lot, like one night a week. And the way that the permitting is done, they're required to get permits for that, but it goes from like April to September, one night a week. Well, they don't, they cannot continue their business practice under the current, under the current ordinances. So, my question is, can we, is there any way that, and also, they don't, what we're requiring is not, is different than what the county and the state and the county health department require. And so, I need to, I'd like a solution for those folks, so we're not basically chopping off, you know, a huge amount of their business just because of the blanket coverage of an ordinance. Maybe an exception to primary business or I don't know.
This ordinance does not apply to an individual or a business extending their business out into their parking lot. This is where there's, it's a separate business that's locating out on the partial of their property.
So, what's affecting, what's affecting my, the gentleman that contacted me is a different ordinance, so we'll need to take a look at?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right.
Yes, Brian, if you look at the definition of outdoor seller, it does exclude merchants who extend their sales out into the parking lot.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions on this item?
There.
Yeah, Gary?
Dan's probably moaning, because I seem to always throw something in at the last minute. This item that's been added about the educational, religious, charitable institutions shall be exempt from it. Are we saying they're exempt from everything or just the permit fee?
They're exempt from getting the permit. So, it would be the whole, the requirements of the permit and then all the requirements on getting the permit.
This all started, as we know, down in the Paseo, and there was a lot of concern about what Kathy was doing on her parking lots and her land that she was leasing and the safety issues. So, safety issue, safety issues are a problem with that, but the safety issues are not a problem on OCCC's campus?
This was just a suggestion that was made by some of the council members. It's a policy issue for the council side. I would assume that the safety issues would apply on any piece of property regardless of whether it's an institutional use or a commercial use.
It just seems we're setting up to where a vendor, again, could be at one festival or one spot, and they would be required to follow all of this, including the safety stuff and the permitting fee and everything else, but yet if they join in with a school or church, all of a sudden, they don't have anything. And it, I think we're picking on some people, again, at the expense of others. And I've had problems with not only this, but the revocable issue as of trying to settle a fight down there, and just keep seeing one more thing. I'm probably going to have to, I'm probably going to have to be against this because of the, if it's, if we're going to say it's for one thing, then it ought to be consistent across the city. If safety's an issue, and we want a drawing, and we want so much space left open and all of that in one area of town, it ought to be the same, no matter where they put it in Oklahoma City, in my opinion. If that's what you're really, if that's what's really driving this. If it's something else altogether, then I don't know that we needed to address it at all. But I would at least like to see 39-70B to say is they're exempt from the cost of the permit and everything else has to be applied to it. If that's what, if you're trying to relieve the charitable people of the cost of the permit, that's one thing, but if you totally relieve them of everything that's going on, that's another thing, in my opinion.
Sam?
I think it's a good point. I mean, I haven't talked with Gary before about it, just it makes all the sense in the world to me, because, you know, well, unless there's some other thought, I'd like to amend it with that.
Dan, do you have any thoughts coming to mind after hearing this brief conversation?
The council's-
Clearly a council discretion-
Decision that they want to exempt religious and educational sellers on those type of properties for the permit fee, we could do that.
All right. Sam, do you want to make an amendment then?
Gary? May I ask a question, please?
Yeah.
Do we exempt charitable religious institutions from any other permit fee process in the city?
I'm not aware of anything right offhand.
If they get a building permit, and they have to apply with, have to comply with all the codes and ordinances we have in our books, there's no exceptions for-
I can't say that there aren't any, Councilman, nothing I'm aware of right now.
But in general, we would expect them to abide by all the safety rules, fire prevention rules that we have for any other building.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I agree with Gary, and I would go further. I don't think we need to exempt them from the fee. I think if the fee is necessary to cover the cost of doing business, I don't think the city, our other citizens ought to subsidize religious and institutional institutions in that way.
Skip?
I think the question, I remember this discussion in the, in one of the briefings, was, for instance, we have one of the educational institutions, it's all on their private property. All of the infrastructure and including security is controlled by them. And so, they're not, you know, I mean, the parking, the acts ingress and egress to the, to the campus, it's all under the management of the university. So, how would you put a permit on an institution that's controlling everything on their own private property as far as requiring a permit for them to have a, an activity there?
Well, and what Skip's speaking of is Oklahoma City Community College's art festival there. And the agreement that we reached, Sam, before this came out, was basically, what was going to end up happening was every single vendor was going to have to do their own permit. And that, I think, I think that puts an excessive burden on the operation of that arts festival. If you want to change it so that Oklahoma City Community College can pull a permit that blankets the entire operation, fine. But for every single vendor out there to have to be responsible for getting a permit, you're talking about people coming in from out of state that don't know exactly, they're not going to be here, I mean, it's just a, it's a weekend deal, and they're traveling, they're not going to have the logistic capability of pulling permits, it's going to make it very, very difficult. So, if there's an, if we want to include the institutions, I won't make a big point with that, as long as the institution can be the one that pulls a single permit that blankets their property.
Well, don't they do that in the form of a revocable?
The revocable is very similar to that, but that's for use of the public right of way. But the operator or the sponsor of the event for a vocal permit is responsible for doing all that. And in vocal permits, an outdoor seller's license is not required. It's covered under the revocable permit.
Do this as a single permit?
We could. I would say that the same, having been a lot of these meetings with the different citizens involved in this, the same thing could be, the same argument can be made of any festival. I mean, I know that Kathy Jacobson that operates adjacent to the, to the Paseo Arts Festival has the same problem with having a lot of vendors coming in from all over the state. They're only going to be there for three days, and yet they have to go through a fairly elaborate application process and pay the $50 fee individually. And so, that's a common problem where you're having more than one outdoor seller at a location in a festival-type situation.
But is that, is that being used on multiple properties or is it one property?
There are, it's under one ownership, or it's when they operate on one parcel. They still all have to get individual outdoor seller permits.
See, what you're suggesting at OCCC is part of the reason they're doing it to punish Kathy, in my opinion. She hasn't been pulling one individually. She'd been pulling one for the site. And you're suggesting let them pull one for the site instead of one individually, so it's-
Well, I think, I think this is the problem that we get into when we start trying to solve problems on one case-by-case basis as opposed to a general, a general issue. And I just can't, I just can't see increasing the burden out there on something like that. And, I mean, it just, to me, it just, it doesn't seem, it doesn't seem reasonable. I think that we're trying to micromanage like their event for them, and there's been no problems at all.
And do we not have the same problem with churches? I mean, the Greek festival or any of these things where they have booths and they sell things outside, that would, this would apply there as well?
Well, I would suggest we take this back and look at it further, or we make a motion.
Well, just in being introduced today, you've got two more-
Good point.
Two more hearings to, you know, strike or amend or discuss.
Okay. Well, then, I would like it to be approved today as, if we're going to do it, if we're going to do anything today, I think it needs to be done the way it is on here, and we can talk about exemptions later or exceptions later.
We're not approving anything today, though.
Mayor-
Yes?
Could we just, with respect to dates, it's been brought to my attention, doesn't change any of the discussion, that we're not meeting, we are meeting on the 20th now of April, and that was the reason for the third hearing being on April 27th, that we have April 13th for the public hearing and then final adoption on the 20th instead of the 27th.
Okay. So, we're going to change the day for final adoption to April 20th. All right. Do we need an amendment on that?
It's really not on for council action today, according with Councilman Ryan's resolution. It's just for staff comment, and there's not any council action to be taken.
It can be included in the motion.
Okay. So, we will need a motion. Sam, you want to make a motion? With this-
Final adoption beyond April 20th.
And for the final adoption to be on the 20th.
Some of it.
All right. We have a second? All right. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Is that it, or we need to vote on it otherwise? That's it.
It is included.
All right. Items from council. Gary, do you have anything?
I do, Mayor. Thank you. Couple of things. And, you know, I took the longest meeting, one of the longest meetings, we got to finally have something. Two things. One, Jim, if you and Kenny would put your heads together on, I'm receiving numerous complaints on the buyer's guide that's thrown up onto the yards or driveways individually from the paper. It's my understanding that if you take the paper, you get the buyer's guide in your paper. But for those people that don't subscribe to the paper, the vendor is throwing the buyer's guide up unsolicited. And I'm suspecting the answer is, we can't control that in any way, but I'd like for you to research that and see what, if anything, can be done about that. The second thing is, at the risk of opening the discussion up again, this issue on the floodplain that we dealt with in the PUD really bothers me a little bit. Jim, I'd like a staff report on this issue of what we consider, the amount of land we consider usable when we're making these kind of decisions. If a drainage study is done that limits the number of developable acres on a site, it would only make common sense to me that that amount of land be the only land considered for density purposes when you're building on it. And if it's true that we have let them use the total amount of land as a policy for years, then I think we need to revisit that and need to think about that in the future. I'd like a report on how long that's been in place. Is that a policy? Is it an ordinance? Is it a staff issue? When do we make them do a drainage study to determine that amount of land so that planning or somebody can make a reasonable decision on it? And how, if we, if I should choose to pursue it, how do we put a change in place to only allow them to use the developable land in a floodplain study like that? It just concerns me that, I mean, the example today was 24 acres of land, but only nine of it is developable. That's a, that's a big deal. But I see even bigger ramifications. 100 acres of land and only 10 acres of developable, but they can use 100 for a density, just doesn't make sense to me. And I think we need to really revisit that.
And there's two issues. There's one, the density that you talk about and how that impacts neighbors around. The other is the drainage issue. So, the drainage issue is all based upon, the engineering calculations based upon the runoff that's received and the capacity of the creeks and those type of things. Those, that isn't really related to the density.
Okay. Whatever it is that determines the amount of land that can be developed on by whatever FEMA study or whatever else is done, that's what I'm talking about.
The FEMA study is only to do with the drainage area that's in there. You've come in and you've got so much areas below a certain elevation, you can't build a house on it because it's going to flood. Okay. That doesn't have anything to do with what the density is on the remainder of the property.
Okay. Tell me what it is, what's the term I'm wanting to use for the fact that they had 24 acres of land there, but there was only nine point something that they could build on?
That's the density, you're looking at the density calculation we use for, but that isn't related to any FEMA requirements or anything out there. That's just the developable land, and whether it's gross or net is how we develop that density unit. That's what you're concerned about, whether we use it as a dense, or as a gross number or a net number. Correct? Am I stating that?
Yes. That's what I'm wanting to get to. If we, out of that 24 acres, if we know that there is 15 acres of it that they'll never be able to build on, why do we let them use that in the density calculations for how many units they can put on the remaining nine acres? That's my concern.
Okay.
One comment about that is, I have a lot of rural development, and if you, if you start to use the, what Eric advocated was what we should use today, you're going to eliminate green space in most developments. I mean, that's, that's how, that's how we get the green space. That's, to me, that was just pure hokey. I mean, if we follow what he said, we will eliminate green space virtually in all, almost all RA developments I know.
How? I don't understand.
Well, in every R1 development, you have to subtract all the green belts, the common areas, the drainage facilities. And if you take a strict interpretation, all the streets, because you can't build on the streets, that's not available either. And the computation would change drastically. And whether it's good or bad, I think we'd have to look at the implications, and one of those implications is the loss of green space, the loss of being able to use drainage facilities, i.e. natural creeks for drainage.
I mean, he's a great lawyer, and that's just a good example of how you can muddy the water, literally, and figure it out. But that's what he did. I mean, that's exactly what happened. And that, I know in RA developments, all, most of them that are out in southeast part of the city, if we eliminated that, you would eliminate green space. They just, that's how green space arises in most developments. I don't understand that. Again, I'll, if, if the amount, if the density changes from 100 and something units on nine acres of land to 300 and something units based on 24, but they could still only stay on the nine acres, how does that do away with the green space? I don't understand that. If they can build fewer units on the nine acres doing what I'm suggesting, or the reverse is they can build more- is they can build more units on the nine acres, how does that reduce the green space?
Actually, it was ten acres. That's another trick Eric used today. It was nine point nine acres, not nine. But, uh, the, the fact is that the, um, the buildable, uh, density is based on the total area that you're using. It's not based on one, one unit. It's based on the total area. As Pat says, you'd have to include streets, you'd have to, anything you couldn't build a house on would have to be subtracted from that. It'd change our entire way we view density. That's what we, that's how we voted today, to, to look at density totally, one hundred percent differently than we've done it in the past. I mean, I, that, that's certainly another way to look at it, but that's not the way I'd like to look at it.
I'm a little bit on Gary's side on this one. I don't understand if they can't build on, um, fifteen of those acres, those, that property stays green. Nothing they can do with it. It can't be built on, so how do we-
And that's what, it stays green. I think Meg made a very important comment. It stays green, which contributes to the overall quality of our, our neighborhoods, that green property. But why shouldn't it be counted? Because it's left green, it's left undeveloped, so that's a positive in terms of how we develop our city, leaving some green area.
Well, it is a positive, but it does impact the density issue.
Okay, but are we gonna subtract streets from our subdivision?
As I understood the ordinance, and I, um, you know, it said the amount developable for residential use.
Gross area, gross, underlying gross.
Okay.
I, I think we need to be real careful before we plunge into this thing because we need to understand all the ramifications of what we're suggesting. And, um, density is, it was an issue, I think it was sort of a red herring issue, but that's my opinion. And, uh, how we calculate it, if we are gonna change, I think we need to make a public announcement of how we change because that's gonna drive how developments are put together all over Oklahoma City.
Larry, do you wanna say something?
Yeah, just very briefly. In this particular case, we had kind of a unique situation in that the land, uh, over the ten acres was, was not able to be built in. But the reason I think that we give credit to, to developers for green space is we want to promote, uh, open area, and some of the open area we want to promote could have houses built on it, and we want to encourage them to leave that undeveloped for the green space. So I just suggest, when you look at this, there may be some unintended consequences that we need to consider before we just jump off and, and do something.
All right. Gary, you still got the floor?
No, that's it.
All right. Sam?
Thank you, Mayor. Meg and I had the opportunity to be on a street, uh, project, um, Friday night. The Tower Theater, the old Tower Theater marquee on Twenty-third near Walker was lighted up Friday night. And, um, those of you that were here in the fifties and sixties and remember driving by the old theaters, that was one of, one of the grand ones, I understand. And it was a grand evening just to see that again. And I think we're gonna see, um, folks coming back to cruising that part of Route sixty-six with that, with that marquee highlight right there. It was a fun evening.
Larry?
Yeah, just like to get a plug for, for Meg's area, Stockyard City. I got to go, was invited to go to the Grand Ole Opry over in Stockyard City for the first time Saturday night with my wife. Delightful entertainment, just a great evening, and they've done a fantastic job in Stockyard City to, to build that theater over there. So I'd encourage anyone who's looking for a good night out on a Saturday night to unveil themselves of that. And then last night, uh, we had a neighborhood meeting that our junior council person was able to come. Allison Letterer attended the Windsor Hills Neighborhood Association, and it was good for her to come to a neighborhood association where people weren't griping or fighting. We had people from Pre-Cure Nursery come in and put on a demonstration of how to, to grow flowers and how to beautify their neighborhood. And so there are neighborhood meetings that don't have contention or wrong. She didn't know that because the last one she went to was kind of a brouhaha, so that was encouraging. I'd like to encourage the neighbors at Hilldale to come out to their meeting tonight at six-thirty. Uh, look forward to seeing them there. Thank you, Your Honor.
Mm-hmm.
Just wanted to remind everybody that today's election day in the Oklahoma City School District in South Oklahoma City, and you need to get out and vote.
All right, Brian? Not here. Meg?
Quickly, I'd like to echo off of Sam's comments. I think we had about two hundred people there Friday night for the lighting of the Tower Theater. And, uh, that, that project was done, um, as a really wonderful partnership. The city, um, helped create part of the, um, street bump out. We had, we had a real problem when the streetscape was done on Twenty-third Street, and the median that was put in the middle forced traffic over into those other lanes, and trucks would come by and just knock the sign out, and it, it just, um, wasn't able to be renovated with that kind of damage. And so the city came along and took out a couple of parking spaces. Really wanna thank Dennis and his crew for helping to do that project as a result of that. And there also was some funding, um, from a grant, actually from the Route sixty-six Foundation, recognizing what an important landmark that is along Old Route sixty-six, which is wonderful. Marty Dillon's the current property owner, he's working really hard, um, on Twenty-third Street to try to see that turnaround, but I particularly would like to, I guess, give a shout out to Michael Smith, who really got Uptown Twenty-third started a long, long time ago. Without Michael's, um, consistent prodding, it wouldn't have happened. And then the folks at Achievers have also done a great job. Between Restaurant and Market C, they took a little old abandoned garage and turned that into a really nice landmark. So I think, uh, Twenty-third Street is, um, on its way back and expect to see a lot more bright things happening along the northwest Twenty-third Street.
All right. Skip?
And I wish Meg would lend some of that to the other side of Twenty-third Street, so we can have this here equality in reference to the growth. But, uh, I would like to thank, uh, Lieutenant Phillips, uh, Charles Locke, and Major Page. We have been experiencing some very challenging issues as it relates to code enforcement in some parts of northeast Oklahoma City. And, um, on yesterday, there was an issue that has just really gotten to be almost uncontrollable. And, uh, Lieutenant Phillips and Charles Locke and Major Page was very instrumental in getting this matter resolved, so the other residents in the area can have, you know, some decent, um, viewing in reference to the conditions of their neighborhood. And, um, you know, I think that the, the reorganization of our code enforcement and the total reorganization of that has been a great positive move towards addressing these issues as it relates to code enforcement in our neighborhoods. I did some research and I was, uh, it was interesting, when Mayor Humphries was the mayor, he appointed a committee to study the urban development and revitalization of neighborhoods. And one of the most important components of this whole study that they pointed out was how we needed to, to upgrade our code enforcement because nothing really can, can grow if you don't have some controls in reference to your code enforcement. And, uh, I believe the chair of that committee was Mr. Wiggins, and I know Ms. Anthony was on the committee, and I think it was a committee of probably about ten or thirteen people. But it was really interesting to see the results that they reported as it relates to how strong your code enforcement is to a community in reference to the vitalization, the continued vitalization of community. And so I wanna thank them because, uh, with the Twenty-third Street overlay and, and some of the revitalization in the Lower JFK area, it's really important that, you know, citizens prepare for, you know, the change and the code enforcement that's being implemented. And what I've been given is for some of their results has been really great, so I wanna thank him for all the hard work that they have done in, in reference to that. And I wanna make one other point in, this, this last issue that we, we all, um, experienced here, um, it's really unfortunate that we have the situation that we have here today this morning. You know, when I look at the, the brief, the first, second paragraph, it clearly stated that they were not against apartment complexes. And I would think that if you have a residential and a developer, that when the opposition states that we're not against apartment complexes, there would, there should be some way that minds could come together and create some type of compromise that would have created, you know, the, the application, the applicant's concerns, and also satisfy the needs of, of the residents. So I, I just think it was unfortunate that, um, that it had to go the way it did. But, you know, I remember, you know, and I, I, I found this from Lyndon Johnson, that cities can stimulate the best in man and aggravate the worst.
Pat?
I won't be as eloquent as my colleagues here, but I would like to thank my colleagues this morning around the source you for their patience and their thoughtful questions and consideration as we discussed this zoning change. It was a very difficult decision, and, uh, I just wanna thank you all for your comments and your questions. I thought they were very thoughtful, on target, very appropriate. Thank you, Your Honor.
All right. City manager reports.
Dan, turn it to her.
All right. Citizens to be heard. We've, we've worn everybody out. They've gone. Uh, we have executive session. We'll be back.